Welcome to the Urban Renewal Agency Meeting for November 5th, 2025. We're going to call this meeting to order. Are there any citizen input or community announcements at this time, Maya? No? All right, we'll move into the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
It's been moved by Vice Chair Hodgson and seconded by Commissioner Waterman to approve the consent agenda. It consists of the approval of June 18th, 2025, June 30, 2025, and October 15, 2025, Urban Renewal Agency minutes, and the approval of the appointment of Member Melody Thompson to the Urban Renewal Budget Committee for a term ending June 30, 2027, and the appointment of Member Scott Cantonwine to the Urban Renewal Budget Committee for a term ending June 30, 2028. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, that passes 6-0. Resolutions. Randy?
I was going to call Jamie Stickelup to help with this. This is approving Walnut Roadway easement, part of our Walnut project.
Yes. Good evening, Chair Hensley and Commissioners. Before you this evening is URR 25-004, which is a resolution approving the Walnut Street, the Walnut Roadway easement and authorizing the interim city administrator to sign all documents necessary to complete the process. As background, the Urban Renewal Agency approved URR 19-003 in 2019. The resolution authorized a minor amendment for the Canby Urban Renewal Plan by adding 2392 Southeast First Avenue, which was 3.71 acres of land to the Urban Renewal District boundary. During that same meeting, another resolution was approved, which authorized the purchase and sale agreement of that land and authorizing the agency director, who was Rick Robinson at the time, to sign all documents necessary to complete that purchase. The agency purchased the property with the intention it would serve as the first parcel of land for the Walnut Street Extension, which would connect the Canby Pioneer Industrial Park to Highway 99E. The property is located outside of city limits and within the Clackamas County's jurisdiction. Clackamas County requires a permanent right-of-way easement for road and utility purposes, and this will be the first easement that you'll see. And in the coming weeks, we will bring other easements for private land forward. And this evening, by authorizing the interim city administrator to sign the easement, the Urban Renewal Agency will authorize the permanent easement, which would be dedicated to the public for road and right-of-way purposes and public utilities. The Walnut Street Extension is proposed to be a 74-foot road with sidewalks, bike lanes, and travel lanes, large enough for trucks entering and exiting the industrial park. And so before you is the resolution, the right-of-way, and then the exhibits, which were provided by Corinne MacLeod and in conjunction with Clackamas County. City staff and Corinne MacLeod recommend the approval of URR 25-004. And at this time, I would answer any questions, should you have any.
Thank you, Jamie. Commissioners, any questions for Jamie or for Randy?
Why would we not approve it?
Is that a question for Jamie?
Oh, I don't know. I'm just for the councils. Like, I mean...
Retorical question.
It's a rhetorical question.
Any questions for Jamie? Commissioner Patten?
Yeah, so I think at the last meeting when this came up, there was a question about, because we're going to sunset the Urban Renewal District, and this land is technically owned by them, and we're giving the city an easement, would it make sense to just transfer the ownership of the property to the city? Does the property stay in possession of the Urban Renewal District, whether it's closed or not? Was there any feedback on any of that?
Once the Urban Renewal District is sunsetted, then all of the land, facilities, paperwork, and I think actually even employees transfer from the Urban Renewal Agency to the municipality. So it will automatically happen with the sunsetting of the district. And I think that for ease, instead of transferring the land to the city, going through with the easements, since it's already within the cities, or within the Urban Renewal Agency and moving in that direction, do this step first, and then it will transfer automatically as part of the other pieces that will transfer over to the municipality.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Okay, very good. Anyone else? Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
All right.
If that's the case...
Commissioner Patten?
I move to approve URR 25-004, a resolution approving the Walnut Roadway easement and authorizing the interim city administrator to sign all documents necessary to complete the process. Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Patten and seconded by Vice Chair Hodgson to approve URR 2500, a resolution approving the Walnut Roadway easement and authorizing the interim city administrator to sign all documents necessary to complete the process. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes 6-0. Okay. Randy, I'll let you take this one, too.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. This is a continuation of our discussion about sunsetting the Canby Urban Renewal Agency. We itemized approximately 11 questions you had at the last meeting. Those are still being vetted through legal, and just wanted to sort of revisit that tonight, see if there were any additional feedback or comments, get further direction from the Commission on our next steps. But really, just answer questions that we might be hearing out there from the public, particularly the fire district personnel, making sure that we assuage any fears of what were our ultimate intent as staff and as a commission are here, and what our objective is with sunsetting the Urban Renewal Agency. So want to get a clear message out to the public of what the intent is and then what the decision that you all are faced with in the coming days and weeks. So, A, just in alignment that we are sunsetting the Canby Urban Renewal Agency and returning all of the tax increment back to the junior taxing authorities, including the city of Canby itself. So I'm seeing head nods and agreement. So the narrative that might be out in public, if there's any sort of ambiguity in that message, should be hopefully put to rest in that regard. The thing that we are wrestling with is a technical question, a little bit political in terms of how, the mechanism by which you wish to do that. You have an option to terminate the agency through ordinance, or terminate the agency plan through resolution. Okay? Both still return tax increment to junior taxing districts so that they can budget for receipt of those monies and continue with their planning. They're just different mechanisms to sunset the Canby Urban Renewal Agency. And we don't know what the future holds. There could be a charter member in Canby that requires a vote of the people to create an Urban Renewal Agency in Canby that doesn't exist now. So that would be a further step that would be required. We just don't know that in the future at this time. But an ordinance would certainly require the agency itself and the plan to be sunsetted. Resolution leaves the agency alive, if you will, but the plan is sunsetted. And we had further correspondence from our attorney on that this evening. So full stop there. I'll pause for any questions, but just wanted to get clarity out there that we are sunsetting the agency in the coming days. That's the direction from the Commission, and we're just working technically on which path to take.
Yes. Commissioner Davis?
Yes. So there were some questions that were supposed to be answered, and I heard you say that those are not ready to go yet.
Right. Almost. We're working on them.
Okay, all right.
We can reconvene when those answers are here, right? We can reconvene when we have those answers.
Yeah. We may be, depending on what council wants to do, we may meet next Wednesday, and we're certainly meeting the Wednesday after. So we have two weeks coming up here, two more shots in November at meetings.
Okay.
This won't drag on.
Commissioner Patten?
So I guess my confusion is, I mean, in several meetings now, we have pretty much affirmed that the plan is to sunset it so the tax increment goes to these districts. I'm curious as to how there is any ambiguity left of that. In fact, I would say, let's get a banner and put it over the Pioneer Court, like Pioneer thing, to say, "Congratulations, everybody, we're closing this down on next date." If that gets it out there, that's fine. But no, I will just reaffirm, at least from my point of view, that the money is going back to the district, and that is that. I will not stand in the way of that, and I don't think anybody else will either.
No, thank you. Well said. So we got some homework to do. We owe you some answers to about a dozen questions, and depending on what council decides to do tonight, we could be back within a week.
Okay. All right. All right. Any further business?
Back in a week, I guess.
Seeing that, I'll take the motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Vice Chair Hodgson, seconded by Commissioner Davis. It's a non-debatable motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
All right, we'll see you at 7:00 for council.
Good evening, Camby. Welcome to our regular City Council meeting for November 5th. I'm not sure where October went, but here we go. If you please stand for the invocation and then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. Gentlemen and Father, thank you so much for this amazing community. We have such an incredible support network and I'm so thankful for that. Tonight, we get to honor some of our officers who put their lives on the line every day for our community. We get to recognize community members that graciously and willingly give up their time to impact our community. I ask that you continue to bless them, bless more people to do the same in these times of need that we are in. I ask for your leadership, or provide leadership and wisdom to those that are trying to sort things out and get things back on track at a federal level. Bless those that were newly elected last night and bless this council to continue to do all the work that it does for the city of Camby. I ask you in your name, amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. One of the really great things about an evening like this when we have this many people is that when we do the Pledge of Allegiance, it really does kind of echo throughout the council chambers. And I know that oftentimes our city council meetings are some staff and, you know, a couple of community members. So next time, you know, we'll ask those community members just to yell it just a little bit louder to kind of match the volume we had tonight. So as I was saying, so we do, we have a really special evening tonight with hometown hero recognition award, which we're very excited about, and then the swearing in of a couple of officers and a promotion. And I heard that there's a special four-legged officer we get to meet this evening too. This is a great turnout. Thank you all for being here this evening. So first up is we are going to recognize Matt and Gretchen McKellum. If you guys will come up here to this table. You are being, you have been nominated and chosen to be recognized as the City of Camby's hometown heroes for some, what sounds like some pretty amazing things. So I'm going to turn it over to Counselor Davis, who was one of the nominees, and let him take it from here for the time being.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Jerry, would you mind coming up and sitting with Mike and Gretchen? I wanted to introduce Jerry Geiger, who also wrote a letter of recommendation for this award. I'll start out with welcoming you and thanking you for the recognition as the hometown hero for Camby. The, I would like to read into record, Ray Keen is not here, I believe, but I would like to read into record the recommendations for the hometown hero award. And this is from the Camby Center, Ray Keen, to whom it may concern. It is my honor to recommend Mike and Gretchen McKellum as the hometown hero for Camby. For nearly 30 years, they have faithfully led the St. Vincent de Paul pantry at St. Patrick's and St. Patrick's Catholic Church, serving our neighbors tirelessly and dedicated with compassion. Through their leadership, countless families in need have received nourishment, dignity, and hope. Mike and Gretchen embody the value that defines Camby: generosity, compassion, and integrity. Their commitment extends beyond the food pantry. They have given their time and resources and wisdom to strengthen our community in many ways. I witnessed their steadfast firsthand as they supported the Camby Center during the expansion project, always with humility and servant's heart. Their influence reaches across to our state as well. With personal investments and time and resources, they have worked to ensure Oregon remains healthy and strong for all who call it home. I'm deeply grateful for their friendship, proud to have them as neighbors, and delighted that they are being considered for this special honor. Recognizing Mike and Gretchen McKellum as the hometown hero would be a fitting tribute to their remarkable legacy of service. Sincerely, Ray Keen, Camby Center. And then we also, Deacon Jerry from St. Patrick's also made a recommendation. Jerry, would you like to say anything?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, member of the council. Each community has heroes, hometown heroes. Many of them are short-lived, whereas in the case of Mike and Gretchen, they took a project, if you will, a community project that had been ongoing for a few years, but not quite the way that they wanted it to be. So through their efforts, they turned it into a community area-wide facility and resource for anybody and everybody that needed food, if you will. And it reminds me of the fact that, you know, the corporal and spiritual works of mercy are really important, you know. Give housing to those that don't have homes, you know, feed the poor, clothe the naked, visit the imprisoned, those kinds of things. And they did all of those things through having the open door at the church. The Catholic Church gets a lot of recognition for this, but it could have been done in any building in any place. And it wasn't just for the church that they did it, they did it for the entire community and many people that were from outside the community that needed the help and needed the assistance. The thing that impressed me the most is The thing that impressed me the most is they lived their lives like anybody else. They needed to take vacations, they had to do those kinds of things, they had other family issues and things going on. They had such a wonderful volunteer group that even when they weren't there, it ran like a Swiss watch. It never faltered, never failed, never was ever in doubt that the service was not going to be provided, week after week, month after month, and year after year. So that, I think, is, was recognizable. The other thing is, some more of their time was done, we'd go over there the day after the food bank was closed and Gretchen and Mike would be mopping and sweeping, sorting food, doing those kinds of things. It wasn't just a one-day thing for a few hours, it was a everyday thing that needed to be kept up with. So behind the scenes, other than what you didn't see presented to the community, was a huge effort. And so they never once complained, they never once argued, they never once did something that I saw that would ever diminish the integrity of the program or of the two of them in regards to what they were providing.
And before we let Mike have a few words, I also, for those that also volunteered at the food bank that are here to recognize Mike and Gretchen, could you stand up as well so that they can see you as well? Okay, Mike, your turn.
My turn. Well, thank you, Counselor Davis, and thank you, Mayor Hobson, Council President Hensley, and all the Camby City councilors. I'll tell you, being nominated by you, Counselor Davis, and supported by our friend Jerry and Ray Keane is, they're the heroes, right? They've been doing it decade in, decade out, right alongside us, and we certainly appreciate your acknowledgement and support. We're deeply humbled to receive the hometown hero award. As Ray said, for the past thirty-five years, actually, we've been running the St. Vincent de Paul Food Bank, serving food to anyone who came to the pantry, and we've provided in that period over three-hundred-and-nine-thousand food boxes, over fourteen million pounds of food, and our volunteers logged over a hundred-and-sixty-six-thousand hours of service. Two major decisions came about that allowed us to serve at that level. First was our alliance with the Oregon Food Bank, who would deliver over sixteen-thousand pounds of food every other week, right to the parish. And then secondly, it was the folks at St. Patrick's, who, they donated their gym. We turned it into a warehouse, and not just for a month or two, but for thirty-five years, right? And so thank you so much to Deacon Jerry, Father Yercheck, Father John Waldron, may God rest his soul, and to Father Romero, who supports this ministry, and all our parishioners who generally helped fund the effort. Our pantry was a hundred percent volunteer-driven, and every dime donated went to purchase food for those in need. We had over sixty-five dedicated volunteers and a core leadership team, joined by Ed and Mary Ann Schramm and Jim and Paulette, Hefflinger, and Bill and Dolores Pillar. Our time was filled with fun, hard work, and gratitude for being able to help those less fortunate. Mayor Hobson, I think our town motto could be "Camby Cares." We had steadfast support through all the decades, from Cuttsforth Market, Saveway, Fred Meyer, our local Kiwanis, our Rotary Clubs, and our local churches. Our Camby Liquor Store provided us boxes to put the food orders in every week, and we received critical funding from the greater Catholic community. While we have closed, the need remains and will be ably filled. This community's support of the Camby Center has been nothing short of miraculous. The Camby Center will be augmented by Bridging Cultures, the new Oregon Food Bank affiliate here, and they'll be ensuring that no one in Camby goes hungry. In closing, I've mentioned the details, but more importantly is our heart. There are three persons who made it possible to serve hundreds of families each week over the past thirty-five years: the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. You see, this pantry was never about us, but rather about God reaching out to each one of us and allowing Him to convert our hearts. Thank you, and God bless.
Well, before you leave your spot there, we have two things to share with you. This first one here, so the City of Camby hometown hero, presented to Mike and Gretchen McKellum. In recognition of your exemplary community involvement through unselfish efforts, significant contributions to the quality of life in the community, and the betterment and the advancement of community goals and vision, your unwavering commitment to the city of Camby have advanced our shared goals and made our town a better place to live. For demonstrating the true spirit of a hometown hero, this certificate is awarded in heartfelt appreciation of your selfless dedication and unwavering commitment to making a difference in our community. Your kindness and generosity have touched countless lives and are an inspiration to all of us. Given unto my hand this day, the fifth day of November, 2025. So this, you get to take home and keep with you. And the other piece is, we have a plaque that hangs in City Hall that has everyone that's ever been given the home, recognized as a hometown hero, and your name is on here now as our most recent addition to the board, and that'll be upstairs in City Hall for everyone to take a look at from now until we get to add another board, all right? So let me, we'll come down and share both of these with you. Freeman, with the counsel. Stand up. Next on our agenda this evening is the swearing in and promotion of a few police officers. Chief, did you want to introduce the four-legged one first?
Nope, last.
Last?
Yes. Well, not the best for last, but the most exciting one for last. Good evening, Mayor and council, and what a great crowd we have tonight. First, I want to mention, so Jerry Geiger over here, right? For those who don't know, was the chief of police here for many years, and about thirty years ago, he hired two young naive officers by the name of George and Jose, and he swore us in about that time. So thanks for being here. Thanks for seeing us. All right, we're going to do the swearing in of the officers first. First, I'm going to call Grace Gaither up. Stand right here. So this is Grace. She started with us on September 8th. She's attending the Police Academy down in Salem. She's about halfway done, and from what I hear, she's doing an excellent job. So when she graduates in the end of January, she'll start our FTEP program, our Field Training Program, and hopefully she'll be on her own, serving other citizens, but early summer.
Early summer.
It takes a while, but she's ready for the hall. A little bit about her, she started high school in Sherwood, but ended up graduating from Grants Pass High School after a family move. I heard she was a pretty decent softball player and ended up playing in college at Oregon State and Eastern Oregon. And she also played a little basketball, Lynn Benton did to add. Her softball team at Eastern made it to the NAIA World Series. So needless to say, she's a pretty good athlete. So one thing I want to mention is that Sergeant Sharmota, about a month ago, mentioned to you that we had a friendly police fire game. Right? And, right? Police won, and one of the main reasons why we won was Grace and Officer Davis back there, who both played college softball. The middle infield was, nothing got through, so, thank you, Grace and Claire. So come watch them next year when we play them. Yes, a couple ringers for sure. So she found a deep passion for giving back to young athletes who are interested, who are in the same place she once was. Coaching has become one of her greatest joys, and she's coached softball at Jervis High School for the past few years. But most of all, she loves spending time with her son Hudson. Think he's right back here somewhere?
He does left.
Of course, right? Who continues to be her biggest inspiration. Grace's decision to pursue a career in law enforcement stems from a desire to protect and serve the community while caring for, forward her father's legacy. Her father is right behind me, Mark Gaither, who served as a longtime officer at Portland Police Bureau and is now the captain at Silverton. Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. Grace says her father has been a constant example of integrity, strength, and humble qualities that she strives to embody, both personally and professionally. Proud dad moment right there. So she chose Camby Police Department because of its strong sense of family, its commitment to growth through training, and the meaningful impact it has on the community. From the moment she connected with the department, she felt at home and knew it was a place where she could grow both personally and professionally. I'll add that Oregon City Police Department also offered her a job a couple days before we did, and she chose us over them. Okay, then we're going to introduce, so just sit back here before the actual drawing in, we're going to invite Caleb Yoder up. All right, Caleb, he's actually our newest officer. He started on Halloween, so October 31st. Yes. So Caleb is a lateral police officer from Oregon State Police. As you know, one of the benefits of a lateral officer, we don't have to send them to the academy, so training gets cut pretty, pretty short. So he should be serving pretty soon, the citizens of Camby. Caleb grew up in the Camby area. He's a proud graduate of Camby High School. He attended Westmark College in Santa Barbara, California. There, he played soccer, and one of his accomplishments while he was there was actually taking a catamaran, was it? Across, from Santa Barbara to the Channel Islands, and I don't think he was a very good sailor, and this is, this is a difficult feat for even a professional sailor, so, but you made it in one piece, I'm sure it was an adventure, so. After graduating, he served in the Army Reserve. He spent ten years as Oregon State Trooper, where he worked in patrol, detectives, and was a member of the SWAT team. He now serves as a member of the Oregon Army National Guard, 641st Aviation Regiment, as a pilot. So thank you for your service for that. Caleb, Caleb and his wife Megan, who also serves in the Army, and she actually is an Apache helicopter pilot, which to me, I think is way cooler than a fixed-wing pilot. I don't know. They were married last year, and they're expecting their first child in March. They share their home with a dog and two cats. So Caleb became a police officer out of commitment to helping, protecting, and seeking justice for others, especially those unable to protect themselves. He was drawn to the sense of purpose, discipline, and responsibility that law enforcement demands. Having grown up in this close-knit community of Camby, he recognized that many opportunities it provided him and is dedicated to giving back, helping ensure the next generation experiences the same safety and quality of life he did. We're excited to have Caleb join our team. Thank you.
Judge Raff, where are you? Can you come up and do the honors?
All right, wait. No, you can't stand back there, you gotta come up.
That's my idea.
Okay.
Just a little bit.
Okay, raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, state your names.
I, Caleb Yoder.
Do hereby solemnly swear
Do hereby solemnly swear
that I will support and uphold the constitutions
That I will support and uphold the constitutions
of the United States
Of the United States
and the state of Oregon
And the state of Oregon
the charter and ordinances
The charter and ordinances
of the City of Camby
Of the City of Camby
remaining in compliance with
Remaining in compliance with
the professional standards established
The professional standards
by the department's mission
By the department's mission
values and professional code of ethics
Values and code of ethics
Professional code of ethics.
I didn't write this on it. Department policies and directives
Department policies and directives
and will faithfully perform the duties
And will faithfully perform the duties
of police officer
Of police officer
for the City of Camby, Oregon
For the City of Camby, Oregon
to the best of my ability
To the best of my abilities
Congratulations.
They're both hers.
They're both hers.
Oh, well, we'll get that fixed.
You don't get one. Just sign it.
Oops.
Oops.
We'll get another one. Okay. Great. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Congratulations, welcome, congratulations. I think we're going to have your dad, Mark, pin the badge on you, so we'll go do that first. Thank you.
What's that, stab you?
I would laugh if she just started screaming.
Child abuse.
Good design. Oh, boy. You should be experienced in this, Mark, come on.
It's usually the other way around.
No. There's a, there's a.
Nice.
So I get to be the honors to pin Caleb Yoder here. I'm sure he wanted his wife to actually pin this on it, but she is serving in the Army, like we said, and she's in Texas currently, so.
Put the badges.
Yeah.
Well, we're not done yet. All right, so next is a promotion. So tonight, we have promotion of one of our officers to the position of Patrol Sergeant. A sergeant is the first-line supervisor for our department, and this promotion is taking place of Captain Murphy, who recently was promoted to captain from sergeant. So I'm going to call up Britten Nelson. Great, thank you Judge.
Thank you.
Welcome. Congratulations. Welcome. Congratulations. I think we're gonna have your dad, Mark, pin the badge on you. We'll go do that first. Thank you. What's that, stab you?
I would laugh if she just started screaming.
Oh.
Good design. Oh, boy. You should be experienced in this, Mark. Come on.
It's usually the other way around.
No. There's a, uh.
There is. Nice. So I get to be the honors to pin Caleb Yoder here. I'm sure he wanted his wife to actually pin this on it, but she is serving in the Army, like we said, and she's in Texas currently. So.
Put the badges.
Yeah.
Well, we're not done yet. All right. So next is a promotion. So tonight, we have promotion of one of our officers to the position of patrol sergeant. A sergeant is the first-line supervisor for our department. And this promotion is taking place of Captain Murphy, who recently was promoted to captain from sergeant. So I'm gonna call up Britton Nelson. All right, a little bit about Britton Nelson. So he grew up in the area and also attended Canby High School. Some of you may know his grandfather Gary Litten, who's a longtime Canby resident and been a longtime board member of the Canby Rodeo. Britton attended University of Oregon and was a member of the field and track team. I believe he still holds the Canby javelin record for, for Canby High School.
True.
Yes. So Britton started with us a little over nine years ago. He has worked as a patrol officer, K-9 officer, and the last few years as a detective. And as a detective, you serve on the major crime team. And he was actually co-lead of several major investigations and did an excellent job. He is currently a firearms instructor, defensive tactics instructor, active threat instructor. He's also been a TASER instructor, less legal instructor, and use of force instructor. He holds an advanced certificate at DPSST. As you can see, he's done many things for our department and has worked hard for this promotion. We are excited to have Britton as part of our supervision team, and he is officially now a sergeant.
Thank you.
And we're gonna have his girlfriend, Janelle. Pin the badge on him.
Can we just take off?
Nice. Yeah, there we go. Would you like to say anything, Sergeant?
Sergeant, 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 he, he has many times come up here and said a number of words.
I'm very grateful for the opportunity, and I love my team and my family. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, to last but not least.
It's pepper time.
Sergeant Anderson, can you please come up? So Sergeant Anderson is making her way with our newest addition to the police force, K-9 Sugar.
Hi, Sugar.
Hey, Sugar. So Sugar, so we had, what, about a month ago? We've had her about a month, and she's been training and getting used to our department and different assignments she has. So Working Dogs of Oregon is a nonprofit here in Beaverton. They rescued Sugar from a less-than-ideal situation and trained her to be a comfort dog specifically for police departments. Sugar was donated to us by Working Dogs of Oregon at no charge. So thank you, Working Dogs of Oregon. We've also teamed up with Wilco in Town, and they gave us a bunch of supplies for free and also supplying food for the life of Sugar. So thank you, Wilco in Town. Awesome. So Sugar Roll is a little bit different. She is not a apprehension dog, so she's not gonna chase you. She's not a detection dog, so she's not gonna sniff and see if you have drugs on you. She's actually an emotional support dog. She will assist officers after high-stress calls, provide comfort to crime victims, and help deescalate tense situations. Her presence also supports officer wellness. She has already been deployed on several calls and visits throughout our community, and she has been a huge hit. So I welcome you all to come by and visit Sugar at the police department sometime. You could get a closer look, but she loves to be petted. She is very calm, but. That is all. Thank you for your time.
So before everyone starts running out the door, Chief Try, I want to just thank you and compliment you on the force that you continue to build here in our city. These are great officers that are being promoted and added, and it's been great to watch over the years. Sitting here, and I think I've seen almost all the officers in this room, be hired, be sworn in, and seeing them promoted. So it has been great to see that, as Canby has grown, we have been able to maintain a very great police force that have kept Canby safe and one of the safest cities in the state of Oregon. So thank you, all of you, for the hard work that you do. It's very much appreciated, so thank you.
Thank you.
We are gonna take a brief pause so that those that want to leave can do so, and we'll reconvene business here in a couple of minutes. Those of you that want to stay, please stay. We have a fun-filled agenda. Every Wednesday's fun-filled. All right. All right, well, we will continue on with our agenda. Mr. City Administrator, do we have any new employee introductions tonight?
Mr. Mayor, we do not.
I think we just saw them.
I think we just saw them. Thank you. Next on the agenda is an opportunity for citizen input. It's an opportunity for the community to address the council on non-agenda items. If you are interested in speaking to the council, there are yellow cards posted on the podium there by the back door. Please fill that out. I'm not sure why I said the back door, but by the door. You can bring that to Maya, and you can address the council or make an announcement. If you are wanting to do your comments via Zoom, please contact City Hall by 4:30 on the day of our city council meetings. I do have a number of cards up here, but most of them are for our public hearing that's here in a little bit. But the cards I do have. I'd like to invite Michelle, Jackie, and Trevor to come on up and talk to us a little bit about the coalition update.
Hello. I know nobody can ever hear me.
Good to see you again.
Hey, good to see you guys.
I'll try to be closer to the mic.
There you go.
Hello, I'm Jackie Jones. I'm here to give the city council and the mayor an update to the Canby Prevention Coalition's, what we've been doing the past year, because you guys asked us to come back to let you know what was going on. So that's what I'm gonna do real fast with Trevor and Michelle. I'm a citizen of Canby as well, in case not all of you knew that. And I just wanted to explain the Canby Prevention Coalition. Our mission is basically, we believe that all families have a, are key to developing prevention, strategies in promoting healthy youth, and reduce the use of vaping, alcohol, marijuana, illicit opioids, prescription drugs, and other things that go along with that. And then we also know that that can also be like a wraparound with mental health. So that's all kind of encompassing. And then our vision has been that we believe in providing everyone an opportunity to learn about the risks and dangers of all these substances, the misuse, the use, and empowering our community and making sure that we all have informed and healthy choices, that we all know that we are supporting all of you. And that's just what our quick update on that, and I'll pass it on to Trevor.
Excellent. Trevor Higgins, I represent the Canby Prevention Coalition. I'm also employed by Clackamas County. It is definitely my pleasure tonight to be here before you, sharing a little bit of our success as we've been working very, very, very arduously to make, well, to continue to stand true on our promise to help work alongside you to enhance what we're doing well in Canby. So I prepared a quick statement. As I mentioned, it's my, it's my pleasure in these few minutes to discuss our updates. Since 2022, the Coalition has been working arduously to secure funding to support our coalition, our coalition prevention-based work in the community. In 2024, Children, Family, Community Connections was selected as a recipient for the federal grant from the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy under the drug-free support, under the drug-free communities. Oh, man, sorry, that's a long thing. Drug-free community support program. The grant is managed by the Center of Disease Control and Prevention and represents an opportunity to strengthen ongoing efforts for preventing youth substance use in Canby. The ONDC, the ONDCP's DFC program is the nation's leading effort to mobilize communities to prevent and reduce substance use among youth. It provides the community, our community, Canby, the opportunity to identify and respond to issues unique to Canby and change any conditions tied to youth substance use. With this grant fund, we'll be able to continue to build a safe and healthy community where our youth can thrive. We've been successful in working alongside the community to identify and hire a new coordinator. It has been great to find somebody who has been a fit, not only qualified, but somebody who, again, Canby provided a lot of input in to make sure that this was a, truly a fit. And so that coordinator is with us today, and this is Michelle. And I'm gonna turn the rest of the time over to her.
Hello, City Council and Mayor Hudson. My name is Michelle, and I was selected to be the Canby Prevention Coalition Coordinator. I just wanted to take a moment to introduce myself since you all kind of had a role in the process. And I want to share about my passion for substance use prevention and discuss the Coalition's achievements and goals. I moved to Canby in March of this year, and I'm so grateful to be part of such a close and collaborative community. I have a master's degree in public health with a concentration in health systems and policy. This has taught me how effective early intervention is in improving community health, preventing future harm, and promoting economic prosperity. For the past four years, I have worked in the field of youth substance use prevention. And I have experience working with drug-free coalitions such as this one. Educating youth and parents about the risk of sub- and I have experience educating youth and parents about the risk of substance use and implementing community-wide, community-driven, and data-driven strategies aimed to provide youth with opportunities to thrive. In the past year, the Coalition has made great strides towards promoting healthy youth and decreasing substance use. We have collaborated with families, law enforcement, Canby Fire, and community organizations to learn about the greatest needs in terms of youth substance use in Canby. We sent five Coalition members and one youth to the Community Anti-Drug Coalition of America Conference in DC, where they learned about the most effective strategies and practices for prevention. Next year's goals include collaborating with, with the school district to obtain school health data. This allows us to better inform our strategies and align to the specific needs of Canby's youth. We are also looking forward to hosting a parent night in partnership with Canby Law Enforcement. We have a tentative date of December 10th, and I'd like to invite all of you and your families to attend. We will cover, we're partnering with law enforcement, as I said, specifically Officer Wollers, who's a school resource officer in the community and very instrumental to the Coalition. We will be talking about the harms of youth vaping, both nicotine and marijuana, internet safety tips, specifically as it relates to youth substance use and how the internet can be a dangerous place for that. And we're gonna provide actionable steps families can take to keep their students alcohol and drug-free. I will send you all a calendar invite once the details are finalized. I just want to end with saying we love Can-, we love Canby and thank you all, thank you all for all you've done to prop up the Coalition, secure funding, and your continued support and dedication to keeping families healthy and thriving. Thank you.
Sorry, real quick. I would definitely like to say thank you, thank you, thank you for your continued support. The Canby community has been just so welcoming for all of us. It has been a really powerful experience for me to see the growth, to see the continued support, the trust and the belief that we were able to find funding and secure funding for it. So I just want to say thank you so much for that trust, and this is just the beginning, so we're excited for that. So thank you.
Noah, I thank you, the three of you very much. Jackie and Trevor, thank you for your continued work and focus here in Canby. Michelle, welcome to the team. I know that that was a big goal, was to get someone like you on board to continue to help push forward and whatnot. So Trevor and Jackie have done a tremendous amount of work, as you know already, and laid a lot of groundwork on this. It's, it's an important issue. We don't think it's, it's, sometimes these things are out of sight and out of mind. But there are an underlying toe and, underlying tone in a lot of communities, and Canby is no different. And it is just start, it starts with communication and making awareness around it. So I appreciate, Jackie, your comments too of tying it into mental health, because that's, they go hand in hand sometimes. Well, in a lot of cases, unfortunately. And so thank you guys very much for coming and giving us an update and, and your time. Thank you.
Excellent. Hope to see you on the 10th of December.
Yep. Thanks. Everything else I have is regarding a later issue. So we'll move into the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda that consists of the approval of the October 1st, 2025 City Council Regular Meeting Minutes, the approval of the appointment of Member Chris Wright to the Bike and Pedestrian Committee with a term ending June 30, 2028, and the appointment of Member Melody Thompson to the Budget Committee with a term ending 20, or excuse me, June 30, 2026, and the appointment of Member Scott Cantonwine to the Budget Committee with a term ending June 30, 2028.
Second. Sorry, was that you, Counselor Patton?
Yeah.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Counsel President Hensley and seconded by Counselor Patton to approve the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of the October 1st, 2025 City Council Regular Meeting, and then approval of the appointment of Member Chris Wright to the Bike and Pedestrian Committee with a term ending June 30th, 2028, the appointment of Member Melody Thompson to the Budget Committee with a term ending June 30th, 2026, and the appointment of Member Scott Cantonwine to the Budget Committee and with a term ending June 30th of 2028. Any other comments or questions at all? I'm just gonna add that the, on the Budget Committee side, we had five applicants for the two seats for the Budget Committee, and they, and thank you, Maya, for being involved in that, and Kim as well. There was, it was a tough call. I mean, we had a lot of really great candidates for the role and all very much numbers-oriented. They'll, they'll give you a run for your money, Counselor Sterns, come budget season, so. But I think the two that we, we've selected are gonna do a great job with our Budget Committee. are going to do a great job with our Budget Committee, tons of experience. One of them, I think, might have been on the City Council at some point. I don't know, but, so, but thank you, Kim, for your help with that as well, being the Budget Chair. So, very good. So, nothing else? Any others in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. The consent agenda is approved, 6-0. Next on the agenda this evening is a public hearing, and this is a, so it's consider a noise variance for Pearl Oak Construction, Trammell Crowe for early morning concrete pours, and concrete tilt panel crane picks at 2121 Southeast Township Road from 3:00 in the morn, 3:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. December 1st, 2025 through February 20, February 2nd, excuse me, 2026. So before we get into it, read our public hearing disclaimer. The public hearing considering a noise variance from Pearl Oak Construction and Trammell Crowe. So the matter presented before the hearing body requires a public hearing. All interested persons in attendance shall be heard on the matter. This public hearing was noticed, and those who wish to speak were instructed to contact the city recorder. And those, I mean, other than the cards here, Maya, there was no other requests to speak. Those people that are interested in testifying as either proponents or opponents, if you would please indicate your desire to speak by raising your hands. I've got Sally Johnson, Barbara, Lindy, and Tom. Okay, thank you. Let's see. If there are others here that wish to tag on to this, by all means, please throw the yellow card and hand that to our city recorder. For longer presentations, proponents and opponents may buy time from one another. In so doing, those either in favor or opposed may allocate their time to a spokesperson who will represent the entire group. All questions must be directed through the mayor. Any evidence to be considered must be submitted to the hearing body for public access. All written testimony received both for and against shall be summarized by staff and presented briefly to the hearing body during the staff report. The public hearing will be conducted as follows. There will be a staff, a staff report, which will be provided by Planning Director Don Hardy. Then there'll be questions, if there are any, by us, the hearing body. I will then open the public hearing for testimony. So that'll be proponents, so those that are for, not more than three minutes. And then opponents will also have not more than three minutes each to address the council. I will then close the public hearing. Questions, if any, by the hearing body, and then discussion by the hearing body. A decision shall be made by the hearing body at the close of the hearing, or the matter will be continued to a date certain in the future. This will be the only notice of that date you will receive. Does anyone have any questions about the procedures of the hearing? All right. So, Mr. Hardy, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to give a very brief overview of the staff report. Trammell Crowe Company representatives and Pearl Oak Construction representatives are here as well, and they do have a presentation which will follow my staff report. I just wanted to touch on a few items on, as you mentioned, into the reading of this. The request for the noise construction variance is from 3:00 a.m. to 7:00, 7:00 a.m., and that would occur from December 1st, 2025, to February 2nd, 2026. Overall hours for construction would be 3:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Outright, what the city code does allow is 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. outright for construction. So this is kind of a bookend for you all in that discussion. For context, Oregon Liquor License Control Board received a recent noise variance to the northwest of this location with similar hours of operation that were proposed from, from June 5th, 2025 to February 28, 20, 28, 2026, from 2:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m. As I mentioned, Trammell Crowe is here to review the need for the noise construction variance, the duration, the residential adjacency, types of construction required, communication and contacts, and other projects they've completed in Canby. Just as a framework on this, and I know normally on these noise variances, we don't really give elaborate staff report, but in this case, given the interest in this, in this noise construction variance, our administrator asked that we put this together. And so in framing this up, Chapter 9.48050B does talk about council and the review for that, and that would include considerations of the protection of health, safety, and welfare of citizens as well as the feasibility and cost of noise abatement, their surrounding type of existing land use, the acoustical nature of sound emitted, whether compliance with the provisions would produce a benefit to the public as a final criteria. We have not put together a recommendation. We've put together options for council, and that's based on the way these are set up kind of uniquely in our code, which falls into the nuisance section of our code in Chapter 9, which is separate from our development code. But those options would be to approve the noise variance, approve an alteration to the noise variance with different hours, or to deny the noise variance, which would default to the city-approved construction hours of operation, which are 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. again. That concludes my, my staff report, and Trammell Crowe has a presentation that they'll, with a PowerPoint, they'll, will bring up here, and their, their, their team will come up and discuss the details of, of their noise construction request.
That would be helpful.
Wow, the company's here. The whole team.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, and the good folks of Canby. My name is Louis Fontenot. I'm a Vice President of the Trammell Crowe Company. We're the developer of this project. In our presentation, there we go. Okay. In this presentation, we're going to do, we're going to tell you a little bit about the project, the people that are working on the project, and then why we're requesting this variance. The project itself, it's a 778,000-square-foot distribution warehouse that's located here in Canby. It's being built, developed by the Trammell Crowe Company, Pearl Oak Construction, and designed by McKenzie, all based in the Portland metro area. There it goes. We, please tell a little bit about this photograph, where we are now with the project.
Yes, certainly. So my name's Taylor Aguirre. I'm a project manager with Pearl Oak Construction. So up here, you can see an aerial shot of the site that we're working on. As you can see, we've already commenced with construction, so we're well underway with masquerading, and we've begun rocking the building pad and the parking lot, getting ready to start digging for storm infiltration systems as well as for footings. And so a lot more work coming down the pipeline here, but that's a snapshot of what we've got.
Thank you very much, Taylor. So a little bit about Trammell Crowe Company. We were founded in 1958. Here in Portland, the office here was opened up in 1978. We've been over here, we've been around for a long time. And the reason why we've been around is because we do things right, we do it right the first time, and we really strive to be good neighbors in the communities that we work in. Myself, I've lived here only 30 years. My wife, who is from Portland, says I'm not a native yet, and I plan to live here another 30. Everyone here has been here in Portland, in Oregon, for a minute. Canby is a part of our community, and we don't want to do anything that is going to disrupt the community more than absolutely necessary. We've brought the project architect, Ryan Weston, Louis Fontenot, and I'm going to hand it over to the good four folks at Pearl Oak. So Chris, please introduce yourself and then your team.
I'm Chris McGlothlin, one of the partners, owners at Pearl Oak Construction and a Vice President of the company. I'll turn it to the, my team that's working on the project right now and let them introduce themselves.
My name is Drew Carter. I'm Project Director for Pearl Oak Construction, working on this project. With that, we'll give it back to Taylor.
So I've already given a brief introduction. So Taylor Aguirre, Project Manager with Pearl Oak.
I'm Ray Viju. I'm an On-Site Superintendent for Pearl Oak Construction.
I'm Hewitt Solven. I'm a Project Engineer for Pearl Oak Construction.
And just a little bit about Pearl Oak as a whole, for anyone unfamiliar, we're a general contractor. We're headquartered in Twallerton, Oregon. We do a lot of work here close to home. We, we put a graphic up here just to show proximity where we've got our site location. The red dots on there are other buildings that we have built in the city of Canby. So we, we do a lot of work in Canby. We're well versed and, and take a lot of pride in it. So simply put, we're here requesting the noise variance, as you guys have all heard. Essentially, that would take place Mondays through Fridays to allow for construction activities to commence as early as 3:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m., as opposed to starting at 7:00. That duration for the noise variance would just be from December through February. And with that, the bulk of the noise that we're concerned about for folks in the area is the backup beepers with our trucks that are required for safety when we're doing our large concrete pours. And through some upgraded technologies, we've been able to eliminate those beepers while still maintaining safety. We utilize the white noise systems, so much less harsh for any of those of you who've heard them before. So here's a graphic showing the entirety of the site and some of the proximities to the nearest adjacent neighbors. And mind you, the, the distances there are to the nearest edge of property, but for the most part, the noises would be closer to the center of that site as we're pouring our concrete. So just wanted to give a, a visual of what we're looking at there. And some of the rationale behind this request is ultimately to look out for the neighbors. By allowing us to start earlier, we've got a lot of concrete trucks that are going to be needed for these. We have significant-sized concrete pours, and so by starting earlier, we're able to free up the roads so that there's no traffic jams associated with those and reduces that during the rush hour traffic. And it, it also helps to limit the entirety of the duration of the construction project overall, which has that impact on the neighborhood as well. So we've got some contacts up here. For anyone who has any questions throughout or open book, anybody can give us a call if there's any concern, and we're happy to address.
And so that concludes our presentation. Thank you very much. Our contact information is there, well, it's gone. Including my, my email address, my phone number. And so if there are issues, and sometimes there are, I welcome everyone to, to give me a call. If, if Ray, who's onsite, can't get it done, and then just call me, and I'll push everything forward to the appropriate person, try to handle it the best we can. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I think we got, is that, Don, is there anything else you need to add?
No.
Okay. All right. So I'm going to open it up for questions from the council since you all are here, so we'll start with you, Councilor Maldonado.
So thank you so much for bringing this to us. And as in-depth as it was, it was a little quick. I didn't get to catch what the nearest residence was to it. I, I think it was 200 feet?
100.
Was it 100? Okay. And? Yeah, direction across from us, from, on Township Road. Okay. And with that being 100 feet away, what, what are, what is your expected overall noise level during those times?
Yeah, so I believe we're looking at 85 decibels.
85? That's at the source and that's without traveling.
Correct. Yeah.
Obviously, without anything breaking between distance or anything.
Right. And, and that 100-foot mark without the graphic, that's from the fence line. So the source would be quite a bit further in.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Patton?
Yes. So in here, you're requesting, you had said that one of the reasons why you're targeting an earlier start time is to be able to, you know, get trucks off the road during rush hour and all that stuff. So do you mean to, are you, are you essentially saying that you plan on only pouring concrete from 3:00 in the morning until 7:00 in the morning?
I'd say no, because there will be times when, I'll let you answer, but there will be times that there will be some pours during the day. But it will not be 50,000 square feet, feet of slab at one time.
Yes. Well, I, that's why, the reason I'm asking that is to just put it on the record. I would find it very hard to believe that you would cut that track, truck track and traffic off at 7:00 a.m. As much concrete as you've just said you are going to pour in that period of time that you want to pour it, it is going to take a lot of trucks over an extended period of time to do it.
I'll let, please speak to the concrete pour itself, not the sidewalk and other stuff that I was thinking about.
Yeah, certainly.
So, so you are correct. We, we will start pouring at 4:00 a.m. The 3:00 a.m. is for crews to get on-site, lights to be turned on, that type of thing. It will probably take us six hours to pour out. So we are looking 4 to 10 on an average basis. It's roughly a 600-yard pour. Every pour for those slabs are 25,000 square feet, roughly. So yes, it won't, we won't be completely out in rush hour, but we will be able to get the bulk of our, our concrete there. If we push back, say, say we were to start at 7, and then we have all these trucks coming from McMinnville, per se, the Cal Portland, we, I mean, the chances of us getting that, that concrete down in six hours is very slim. I mean, we'd be much, we're, we're pushing for 100 yards an hour at that rate. When we're, when we're dealing with traffic like that, we're lucky to get, you know, 65, 70 yards an hour.
Sure. Okay. My next question is, in, in our normal standard times which noise can be made is 7:00 in the morning till 10:00 at night. I assume that once the concrete is poured, you're going to continue to have activities on the site. Do you plan on utilizing the time all the way to 10:00, which you would normally be allowed to do when, under the standard 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. work time?
I, I would say that it's a, there's a lot of variables in that. Obviously, weather, you know, temperature. Concrete kind of has a mind of its own. I would think that we could be pretty close to done by 7, but if it, you know, is 34 degrees outside, it might take us till 10 to get done, so.
Well, here's the concern that I have about that. So when you do the math on all of this, our normal times from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. is 15 hours' worth of noise, essentially. If you are planning to do 3:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., that is 19 hours of noise out of these people's day. And I'm just going to tell you right now that I don't care whether my house was 100 feet or two miles away from that, I would be pretty agitated. And so I have some serious reservations about approving this because of that reason. So that kind of, that kind of confirms my suspicion of all of this. I have no other questions.
Okay. Thank you. Council President Hensley had one, and then I'll come back to you, Councilor Maldonado.
Well, mine was kind of similar to Councilor Patton's. I, I was curious, why 3:00 a.m.? Because if you're going to be working in the dark, why not 5 to 9 instead of 3 to 7? I'm just trying to, I mean, 3:00 is literally in the middle of the night for these folks. I'm an insomniac, but most of Canby's not. Okay? So I just, I feel for them at 3:00 a.m. 5:00 a.m. would still be annoying, but probably a little more tolerable. So you're asking for, for 3:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., I'm wondering what's the reasoning? Why can't 5 to 9 work?
I think to keep it in your guys' timeframe of the 10:00 p.m., I mean, on cold days, stuff like that, I don't think we'd be able to start that even at 5:00. stuff like that, I don't think we'd be able to start that, even at 5:00 a.m. Because I think we'd be pushing that 10:00 o'clock envelope some days, on cold days, rainy days, like stuff that's going to be at that point. So that's why we ask for 3:00. Now, at 10:00, we're not going to, we won't be making noise, per se. But probably up till 8:00, while we're sawcutting, we finish sawcutting, then we still have work to do. We're spreading cure. We are pushing around hardener, stuff like that. It's not going to make noise. But again, I don't, we probably wouldn't be able to stay in your 10:00 o'clock timeframe if we were to start at 5:00 or 6:00 in the, not in the afternoon, but in the morning. So that's why we generally start at 3:00 in the morning. It's, and at 3:00, you're not going to get the backup beepers and all that stuff. You're going to have, like, we're going to turn on lights, stuff like that, which aren't... We will purposely point them away from any houses or anything like that. It's going to be focused right on where we're pouring. So from 3:00 to 4:00, that's what usually takes place. And then at 4:00, the trucks start pulling in. But my concern would be that we don't get done at 10:00. And as you guys know, with concrete, if we don't get done at 10:00 and you come shut us down, that is a huge risk for us.
Just one second here. Jamie, yes, I'm putting you on the spot. When we did the downtown concrete pours, we had some curing issues, did we not? When we did those at the intersections, or redoing First Avenue?
On First Avenue, yes.
Yes. Okay. So can you walk us through a little bit of the curing process? Because I think that that's a big part of the explanation as to why you need the time upfront versus later in the day.
Okay. So I'll just kind of walk you through the whole process, right? So we start pouring at 4:00. We get done around 10:00 a.m., hopefully. It takes about six to eight hours to actually get the whole slab to where it's shining. So you'll see, if you ever drive by, you'll see all these big machines out there whipping the concrete up, right? So it's a process where we have to get the cream to the top, and then get it to burn in, is what we call it, burning in. And that gets it cured out. At that time, we have to cut it right away. Because if we don't cut the concrete, once it's cured, you'll get, we'll get cracking everywhere. So we cut it in order to control it. Once it's all cut and cleaned off, then we spray a cure down, a cure like a bond breaker or a hardener-type surface. We spray that all down and push it around. Once that's done and we're done, then we can, we're basically done at that point. But that process of finishing in the concrete, that's the process that there's... Sometimes it can go off really quick. If we get a nice sunny day, a little bit of a breeze, it goes off quick, and we can get done and out of there a lot quicker. But if we get an overcast day where it's 34 degrees out, that process takes a longer time.
Okay. Thank you for that. Councilor Maldonado, then Councilor Davis.
Okay. Couple of questions there. So I used to work in concrete, so I understand the path and the troubles that you guys are going to run into. You're definitely choosing one heck of a time of the year to do it. So I commend you on the effort with that. However, I also know that you're probably not going to need the full two months to do it, if in a perfect world, everything goes correct. Now, with this timeline that you have, that you're asking for, and if you're not able to complete it in the 3:00 to 7:00 mark, how would that affect your overall timeline of the two months?
So right now, we're set up, we have, this is a big project, obviously. We have 30 concrete slab pours at 25,000 square feet. If we are not able to start, and we have to cut those, let's say we have to cut those in half, right? So now we're down to, let's say we cut them down to 15,000 square feet, so we're taking 10,000 off, right? Now, during this time, obviously, as you know, we have to have weather windows and all that stuff. So the chances of that pushing us out two, maybe three months further is a very good possibility.
Okay. Councilor Davis, then Councilor Waterman.
Yeah. Thank you, and thanks for the work that you guys have done in the industrial area. I'm very familiar with your work, and you've done some great job, great work in there. And Don, when you mentioned the noise variance for the state building, they're not around any residents.
Right.
Okay? You know, and that's the difference. And hopefully, before you bid this job, you recognize that there's residents there. And that there's residents 2,500 feet away, a very large industrial or residential area that is already dealing with noise problems from Lampro Steel. Okay? And so, you know, unfortunately, we have a lot of residents that live over there. And we also know that it's going to be truck noise coming in and out. And truck traffic already in that industrial area is bad at, are already, you know, very noisy in regards to Columbia Distribution and the trucks that are running there all the time. I can't imagine what it would be like at 3:00 in the morning with trucks running into that area as well. And so it's unfair to me to put those people that live in that large residential area, and the people that are 100 feet away, to deal with that truck traffic noise. That's the difference between the industrial area where you've been previously working and this one. So I hope that you plan that accordingly, because I am not in favor of, at all, of issuing this noise variance.
Councilor Waterman?
Councilor Maldonado.
Councilor Sterns.
Good question. You mentioned that your noise would be at 85 decibels. If you could add to the question, does that start out at 85 decibels and end the day at a lower amount? Or is that 85 decibels the whole potential 19 hours? Or how does the noise vary throughout the day?
Yeah, that's a great question. A little bit complicated to answer, but ultimately, it's intermittent. That's based on the noise from the trucks with those backup beepers. So they're not constant, but there's going to be quite a few trucks coming through, so on and off throughout.
Well, you mentioned that you're going to do pouring for a certain time, and then you're going to be curing the rest of the time. And of course, I'm not a super knowledgeable construction, but I would assume that would most of the trucks be gone at the end of the day, time period versus the beginning?
The loudest time is going to be from 4:00 a.m. to 10:00.
Okay. And so, and if it was, and if the, you started later, it'd be from whatever, 6:00 or 7:00 until like 2:00 or 3:00 in the afternoon, right?
Right. So it's roughly, roughly six to seven hours of pour time.
Of that, of the noisiest...
Of trucks coming in and out.
Yeah, the noisiest time.
Of the noisiest.
And so if you were to extend it beyond the 10:00 p.m. or something like that, it'd be less noise at the end versus at the beginning? I just kind of get an idea...
No, yes, you are.
...of options out there that may, that may help with the neighborhood.
With the one caveat of the concrete cutting, as you was talking about earlier.
Well, that's where the high-pitched...
Yeah.
Okay.
How close, I'm sorry.
That was...
Yes, Councilor Waterman.
So how close to the end of the day would the concrete cutting be happening again?
Roughly, I would say roughly two to three hours before we're completely finished. So if, let's say we were going to finish at 10:00, the concrete cutting would be done around 7:00, 7:00 or 8:00.
So if it went longer than 10:00, it would go in later?
The concrete cutting is going to be significantly less, less noise than our trucks pulling in and out of the driveway, right? Because concrete cutting is going to be up on the slab where we just poured, which is quite a bit further away from those trucks that are going to be pulling in all the time.
Other questions for Tremor Crowe and Company?
No, go ahead.
So you're going to, you're asking to start earlier, and obviously, that's outside of a normal working hour, and 10:00 is already later. Is there a reason to not be able to work a little bit later, and start a little bit later?
I think if we had to start at 7:00, and we could work till, you know, again, if we're starting at 7:00, and then we push it, and now we're at 1:00 a.m. finishing up concrete, it is going to be quieter, like you said. So maybe we're at 11:00 when the sawcutting gets done, in comparison to 8:00, 7:00 or 8:00, right? Just because you're moving three hours, roughly. I mean, we can, we can do that. Obviously, for us, it's not ideal. I mean, but, you know, we want to make everybody happy, obviously, as well, so.
Yes, Councilor Patton?
So I just got to say, I'm a little, I guess this is not a question so much as a reminder. We have city ordinances, and those city ordinances get followed, okay? We've been talking about this noise, and you've made a few statements to say, well, it could be that it might go past 10:00, because we got to do this thing. Our ordinance specifically says 10:00 is the time. And if you go past that time, now you're outside of the rules. And so I would say that, rather than telling us that you plan on going outside of the time, you should consider adopting your schedule to work within that time. Because I can tell you right now that if I hear people complaining that you are going past the time, whatever extra time we give you, I will lose my crap. Okay? There are too many people that come into this community, too many developers and stuff that come into this community, and push our citizens around. And I will not stand for it. Okay? So I just want to make that very clear. Thank you.
Any other questions before moving on? Okay?
This may be more for, say, staff than for Tremor Crowe, but if there is, say, if we agree on whatever timeframe we do, and the rules are violated, I mean, what's, what kind of consequences does the city impose upon him for, I'm not saying you would do it, but say, starting at 2:00 instead of 3:00 or something to that effect?
So it would be a stop work order to basically make them adjust their works, the schedule. Got it? Yeah. So the idea is to obviously get that schedule planned based on what we decide tonight, so that when the time comes, there obviously is the knowledge to be able to, when, plan when they can do their work. All right. I don't think, I think all of our questions have been answered for now, so thank you. We might need more input from you here as we get through our discussion and resident or comments that we've got here this evening. So sit tight, but please, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I am going to open up the public hearing. It sounds so hollow.
Just hit the table.
No, I totally hit it.
The real ones miss. We have a toy one.
So I have a couple of people that wish to address the council, so we'll start with Sally Johnson, and then Barbara Fontang will be after that. And just as a reminder, please, three minutes on your comments would be helpful.
Real quick, just a, ma'am, in the audience there, I'm sorry, your name?
Cindy Kyler.
Did you submit a card?
I did. I did.
Okay. We just need to make sure that we have all the cards.
Yeah, too.
Oh, sorry, that says Cindy. I think I read that as Lindy. I apologize.
We're going to get him some glasses.
I have glasses.
Well, put them on.
Oh, boy. Sorry, Ms. Johnson, go ahead.
I'm Sally Johnson. I live in the Timber Park neighborhood, which is right in the vicinity. And I learned a lot from their presentation tonight about how the building is going to be situated and the loading docks. It appears to me that the trucks are going to drive in and back up, and their truck is going to face Sequoia. And it's really hard for me to fathom how their supervision, and especially if a buyer buys this, how they're going to say, hey, you're going to all change your trucks to white noise when you back up. And, you know, maybe it's possible, but I don't know. Cement trucks, it's just, I don't know. It's just something to think about. This whole white noise thing is kind of a stretch when you're dealing with as many trucks. And I'm really relieved that you guys are sensitive to the noise issue. One thing I haven't heard mentioned, and it was on their map, kitty corner from their property is a cemetery. It is an active cemetery. There are funerals. There are people going there to meditate. And listening to backup beepers is pretty insensitive while you're there for a funeral. But I also wanted to share that I was walking my dog, and I walked in front of Baker Prairie Middle School on Teakwood, and that's when they were doing construction there. And I could hear the beeping from those construction vehicles all the way from their property, over the top of American Steel, over the business behind that, through the gully, where the railroad track is, up the hill, and over the front of Baker Prairie. And I just was astounded that the sound traveled that far. And I'm thinking, okay, it's going to go to the cemetery, it's going to go to our houses, it's... Because I can hear it in our neighborhood when they're doing it, but I didn't know it went that far. So maybe it, I don't know. It's a tough, it's a tough one. And I'm, I guess, we've had kind of a difficult time with Lampros. And they have been trying to work with us with their sound issue, and I want to thank code enforcement, because they have made a difference in their behavior. But when it comes down to making noise abatement programs, noise mitigation... Oh, I'm up. Okay. Just encourage you to pursue rigorous sound mitigation requirements for the new business.
Great. Thank you, Sally.
Real quick, I have a question. This might seem a bit unorthodox, but I, rules do not allow me to interact with the folks here. Would it be possible to ask each person who has a yellow card here what they would think about a 5:00 a.m. start time, as opposed to a 3:00 a.m. start time?
I don't think that that's, I think you've already posed the question, so, yeah.
I'm kind of doing this indirectly. That is, that is what I'm curious about. From each person who comes up and speaks.
I would be curious by that as well, so...
I've had the same question.
Yeah.
There goes the snow guns again.
So Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
So if not 3:00 a.m., is there a better, I mean, do you have a window of time?
Well, 6:00. 6:00, I can do.
Well, they're 5:00 o'clock, we're being 6:00 o'clock starting, because 5:00 o'clock will be lights.
Okay.
Gotcha.
All right. Ms. Fontang, and then Cindy.
Cindy. Thank you so much for letting me speak. Barbara Fontana, retired schoolteacher. So my, my comments are directly related to students and student success in the classroom. And we've got a huge number of school-aged children, preschool children, that live in our neighborhood. The buses come through to pick them up at 7:00, 7:30, 8:00. And Camby schools, also like Weston-Wilsonville schools, where I taught for 27 years, change school start times because of the studies done for necessary minimum sleep requirements. National Institute of Health state that sleep deprivation negatively affects mental and physical health, leading to issues like poor decision-making, increased moodiness, a higher risk of high blood pressure, heart disease, stroke, and obesity. Insufficient sleep, interrupted sleep, or poor quality sleep affects performance and well-being, with certain groups like caregivers being even more at risk. We have several older aging families also in our neighborhood are caring for. There are family members that have had a stroke, experiencing dementia. You have sound noise in the middle of the night or at 3:00 a.m., and I can tell you from taking care of a mother that had Alzheimer's, that when their days and nights get switched because of noise, it doesn't, it doesn't undo. And then they think nighttime is daytime, and daytime is nighttime. And it is so wearing on the caregivers. There's no, there's no going back. There's no going back. This is what the National Institute recommends. For infants, and we have some in our neighborhood, 12 to 16 hours a day of sleep, including naps. For toddlers, 11 to 14 hours of uninterrupted sleep. Preschoolers, including our early morning preschool kids, 10 to 13 hours. School-aged children, 6 to 12 years, 9... School-aged children, 6 to 12 years, 9 to 12 hours of sleep a night. Our teenagers should get 8 to 10 hours of sleep a night, okay? Not including adults, they should get 7 to 8 hours. Considering these needs, for a high school student to get 8 hours of uninterrupted sleep, if they start at 3:00 AM, they'd have to be in bed by 7:00 PM to have uninterrupted sleep. And I know that when they have uninterrupted sleep, they perform better than they have for me in the classroom. For a middle school student, they'd have to be asleep by 6:00 PM, and preschoolers would be, need to be in bed by 3:00 to 5:00 PM to get the minimum required sleep, recommended by the National Institute of Health. If the noise variance was adjusted to 6:00 AM, or, or keep it like it is right now, 7:00 AM, and ended by 8:00 PM, all the minimum sleep recommendations could be met, if they didn't start before 6:00, and if they ended by 8:00 PM. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Hader, and then Mr. Smith. Sorry, Ms. Fontana, did, did you have a different solution to the problem?
Oh, I would prefer them to start at 6:00 and go from 6:00 to 9:00, not, not, not at 5:00, but start at 6:00 or at 7:00. Because our elementary kids are getting up at 6:00 AM for elementary school, to, to get the buses down.
Hi, Cindy, thank you.
Hi, thank you. My name's Cindy Hader. I live across the street, I'm one of the three neighbors that are 100 feet away from the project. I guess I had just a couple of things I wanted to mention, which I know have been brought up before, but how many of you are willing to get up at 3:00 AM every day just because? Not because you have to go to work, just because there's a lot of loud noise and you can't sleep? My daughter works from home, she answers phones all day, she works in a medical field, she also has severe anxiety, so having her awaken hours before her shift starts is not going to go over very well. So, I also do some work from home as well. She, you know, to be able to hear and answer phones is certainly going to be a big factor there. Also, I did a little bit of research, hearing loss can begin at 85 decibels, so if we're subjected to this for anywhere between 16 to 19 hours a day, I, I think that could have some really negative health effects on a lot of us. I mean, certainly, that is in excess of what's considered an acceptable level. You know, I guess my question for the construction team is, why do we have to pour so much concrete in a day? Why does it have to go that many hours? I mean, they chose the time of year to start, which is obviously winter, worst time, of course, probably, to cure concrete, so why, I mean, this is a spec project, there, there's no identified tenants, to my knowledge, yet, so what's the big rush to get it done that quickly? I don't understand that, and the fact, you know, the paperwork here that we got indicates also that the, you know, the variance they're requesting only went to 7:00 PM. Obviously, I'd rather push it back and not have it start at 3:00 AM, I'd be happy with 7:00 AM, but not 3:00 AM, obviously. So, if it had to go, you know, and push it back later, I guess, that would be something, as long as there's not a lot of noise late at night. But another concern we have, which we've already experienced with some of the concrete trucks that have been in there, is that they hover in the turn lane, right in front of us, on Sequoia, waiting to turn, and the story is that they're, they could do that, they're supposed to stay with their trucks, they have not always done that, I can tell you from watching them. There's noise just generated from the trucks sitting there idling, blocking the turn lane. It also makes it, if there's more than one truck there, almost impossible for us to get out, if we wanted to make a left turn out of our driveway, there's no way to see, so I'm, we've already met with the safety committee about some concerns with the traffic issues that that's going to cause, but I know that's not what we're here to talk about today, just wanted to throw that out there. So, I guess that's, that's pretty much what I wanted to say. I, I feel that it's, 3:00 AM is way too early for most of us, and, you know, is, is a little unfair, I think, for the, the neighbors in close proximity, and the kids, and everybody else who's going to be dealing with this impact, so.
So, Ms. Hader, so, do you have a, like, did you say, like, 6:00 was...
Well, I said 7:00, I guess if they're starting at 6:00 and not pouring until 7:00, that's fine as well, but that would be, you know...
And is there, I mean, so they went to, like, 7:00 or 8:00, or 9:00 at night?
Well, probably the noise level's going to go down at nighttime, so it would be less of an issue perhaps at, at night than it is first thing in the morning, so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Appreciate you as well. Mr. Smith?
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity, counsel. One of the things to, I think, to consider, it's, it's obviously a noise variance that we're here for, but when Lampros built their complex, and I know you all are aware of the noise complaints and stuff that go on there, so I won't bring that up, but you could land a 747 back there with the lights that they shined on that project, while they were pouring also early in the morning. And that's not something that's been brought up, but light is also affects people's sleep as well as the, the, the noise issues that are going to go on. I don't know that there's actually a good time to do this, I mean, it's going to be noisy for a long period of time. We have an infant in our house, our granddaughter, and she does need sleep, we need sleep, I need sleep, I get up and I drive a school bus, which is another thing that, that I don't think has been brought into consideration. I can't speak for the school bus company, because I'm just a driver, but I drive for 91, I drive down that road, okay? I drive down Sequoia because we're, we're down at the end of Sequoia. The, the buses that go to Charis turn on township to go to Charis, and when the trucks are parked in there now, the dump trucks waiting to get in for the gravel and stuff, we're backed up, or they have to go an alternative route, so, I mean, we're going to not only affect the sleep of children, we're going to affect their, you know, the bus driving routes that go on for them as well. So, you know, maybe a 7:00, but it's still going to be, something's going to need to be done when they're wanting to park the cement trucks in the turn lanes, where the school buses are going to need to turn onto township as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I'm sorry, Mr. Smith, did you have a, a time suggestion?
At 6:00 to 7:00 time, I would view that.
And the, and stretching into the evening is...
I mean, as long as it, I don't know what the saw makes from cutting the concrete, I know that the noise is mostly the beepers, you know, from the dump trucks backing up and the finishing work, but as long as it's not, you know, loud enough to wake people up, I don't know what the decibel level is at that, or if they have that information.
Okay.
But yeah, night by 9:00 o'clock would be...
That's right.
Okay. I am officially out of yellow cards, so I think for the sake of not bringing up the entire squad, I think maybe the, the team from Pearl-O, if you guys can come back to the table here, so then maybe we can address some of the, the questions that were posed. So, you kind of hear all the concerns, obviously, through the, the comments here made by the residents here, and by the council, and so I will give you time to maybe address some of those concerns, and I think it probably maybe spawned a couple more questions by, by us, which we'll get to after, be a chance to address what, what you may have heard.
For the last gentleman that was up here, the traffic stuff, starting earlier is going to help that traffic. I think starting at 7:00, now we're going to have 60 trucks that are turning in at 7:00 o'clock instead of 30 later. It's not going to eliminate the traffic, I get that. We won't park trucks in the turn lane, we, we're just waiting to turn in, we have plenty of room on site, the trucks will be, as soon as they can turn in, they will be on site. Like I said, we are trying to help a little bit of that, of the traffic. I know township is a busy road, we're working on getting a right-of-way permit right now, so that we could possibly move our entrance down towards Sequoia if we needed to. That's some options that we're working...
Okay, hang on.
I, and if that's something that's not going to help, then we won't do that either. I'm just trying to throw out some suggestions that might help the situation. And again, like I said, I think if we start earlier, it does help the traffic on, on township in comparison, you know? Instead of being solid trucks until 2:00 or 3:00 in the afternoon, you're now, we're now done by 10:00.
And just to start off, these are all valid concerns, and, and we, we do care about these concerns. Construction, unfortunately, is allowed intrusive activity just in general, so we are trying to find the best solution, and, and we do feel that starting earlier to minimize the overall timeframe of the work is the best solution. We are open if there are, are other requirements, but to the point of the decibel concerns, at any point in the day, not wanting to have the decibels, completely understand, but if we aren't able to start as early as we're requesting, it goes from a December through February timeframe of, and keep in mind, this isn't every single day, this is just a wide-span timeframe, we'll be pouring 2 to 3 times a week, at most 5, but that wouldn't be every week, it just is weather-dependent, so, but if we can't start earlier, we're going to have to cut those concrete pours significantly down, which jumps our schedule out from a two-month situation to up to five or six months, depending on how small those have to cut down.
That was one of my, my concerns, too, is if, again, depending on when you start and how quickly you can move through it, you're stretching out the timeframe versus getting, get out as quickly as possible, so. So, they, one of the comments that was brought up was about the 85 deci, the decibel level being at, like, 85 and whatnot, and I think you had said earlier that, that decibel level is more at the concentrate, like, the work point, not necessarily at the 500-foot mark away from there.
Correct.
Less than that, so...
And it wouldn't, I mean, 85 decibels is not going to be a 19-hour day, you know, you're not going to hear that for 15 hours in the day, you're going to hear that for the time that the trucks are backing in, and then that's it. The, the concrete equipment that works on top of the slab, it's not very loud at all. And so, that, after that six hours, you know, the, the seven or eight hours that we have that we're, that we're finishing and burning in concrete, it's not going to be 85 decibels.
Agreed. And, and also, to your concern earlier of the past 10, completely agree, if we go outside of your guys' ordinance, we should be shut down it, we have zero intention of going past the agreed-upon timeframes. I think the, the comment was intended if we were starting later and extended that timeframe later, so...
It would be more of then switching your ask to a...
Right.
You know, an 11:00 or 12:00 o'clock...
Right, so that was our...
11:00 PM, 12:00 AM, shut off...
Exactly.
Versus the 10:00 o'clock, so you would shift your, your ask, totally get that.
Yeah, we, we will make sure if, if we are starting early, we will not go past 10:00. That is a hard no. If, if that means we have to put on densifier and scrape through the next day, then that so be it, right? I mean, we'd do whatever we can to stay within that 10:00, for, for your concern.
The other comment that, I think the last gentleman, sorry, Mr. Smith, had commented on was, or might have been commented before that, sorry, I collapsed my card lineup. Cindy, was the trucks lining up, and drivers, you can, can we address that? Is that something, that seems to me low-hanging fruit that we can address in terms of making sure that the drivers are staying with the trucks? Do they need to idle, or can they be shut off?
Well, we can pull them all the way into...
You're going to be able to pull them all, okay, you're at that point.
We have plenty of, of real estate out there where we pull all trucks into the, the job site.
So, some projects, that's a huge issue, and you, there's not much you can do. We're lucky enough, on this site, we've got 46-ish acres, and our slab is only the 778,000 square foot, so we, we've got a lot of real estate that we can bring them in off the street to help with that.
Okay, well, I, that's, thank you for that, I appreciate that. I think those, well, those were the concerns brought up by the, by the citizens. If they're quite, we'll get, I just want to finish up the public hearing, and then we can switch gears to the council's questions as follow-up. Okay. Thank you for the rebuttals. I'm going to close the public hearing, and then open it, so, so close the public hearing, so questions, Counselor Maldonado, and then Counselor Sterns.
Yes, my, my two questions were, so the parking, the parking, or the staging of the trucks alone, you, you've got enough real estate, I was going to suggest a whole nother thing, but if you've got real estate for it, that's great. I'm, I'm originally from the Midwest, and when we have issues like this, a lot of the construction sites would build noise barrier walls to help reduce outward funneling of the noise. Is that something you guys are willing or able to do?
I'm not well-versed in that, to be honest with you, I haven't done my homework on that, to sit up here and tell you that I could do it, to be honest with you. It's not something we typically do, obviously, I mean, it's something we can look into.
Yeah, it's a great question. Would that be the entirety of the perimeter of the site?
Sometimes it is, sometimes it's in the direction of the residences. Generally, a lot of them, a lot of times you'll see them where they're actually just simple bales of hay that are stacked, and once they're wet down, they do create a considerable amount of barrier for noise.
We could certainly be open to options within that, if that's something that would be...
Because what, what I'm hearing right now is your two huge factors are your noise and the staging of the trucks and where they're located at, when, when the public's out.
Which it sounds like they've solved the truck...
Yeah, the truck, sounds like that's going to be solved, but if, if we could solve, I mean, even a noise barrier like that would greatly, greatly impact it.
Yes, Counselor Sterns, and then Counselor Patton.
It is kind of a question, and, and I don't know if it's appropriate or not to ask the public that are concerned about the noise, but, but we, I know we had a little polling question, but maybe another polling question would be, would they be willing to trade time for the project for sleep time? In other words, more months of, of being, of being, would that be acceptable? You know, you're going to endure it for a longer period of time, and, and, so, so I've seen, and no one's opposed to that as a, I just was curious about that. That's a trade-off, that. Yes, sleep, yeah.
Counselor Patton?
Okay, I had to make sure my thing is on, I'm notorious for not having my button on. You know, I know that I, I apologize for getting a bit heated there. I might be, I'm only somewhat unreasonable, I guess, I would say. And I understand that with construction projects, things shift and there, then things come up. And, you know, I, I would understand that there might be times when something has happened, and you would maybe have to go past the 10:00 timeframe by, by a short period of time. I guess, and this is also maybe a question for Don as well, would you be opposed to creating some sort of notification system for the residents that wish to sign up for such a thing, that at some point, like, in the afternoon, if it looks like you are going to go past this timeframe, and this would be in rare occasions, that you would at least then be able to push out some sort of group notification or something to the folks that sign up in that neighborhood, to say, just as a heads up, we've had this problem come up, it looks like we're going to have to go, like, 30 minutes past the 10:00 o'clock or something along those lines? So, that way, you are communicating directly with them and building, because you said you want to be good neighbors on this project, I think that would go a long way to building that relationship with these folks, but then also notifying the city of this at the same time, so that we can then monitor how often this is going, so that we aren't slapping you with a stop, oh, stop work order, but knowing that if it goes, you know, there's only so many chips in that bag to use, and if it's used too many times, the bag is taken away, right? Would you be opposed to something like that?
I, honestly, I would hand-deliver those to your, to addresses if that's what you guys want, that's not a problem. On top of that, I, as he said earlier, we're probably looking at 2 to 3 pours a week at most. looking at two to three pours a week at most. You see how much rain we're getting, right? We wouldn't have poured one time this week. I'm just saying. I would also be 24 hours in advance. I would tell you, hey, we're, we're going to pour tomorrow, right? So I wouldn't just say, oh, well, we did it. You know what I mean? I, I would be willing to give you a notification 24 hours in advance that we're going to pour the next day. It's not going to be every day, like we said. So I would give you an advance before we pour and if something did go wrong, which God forbid it does, I hope it doesn't, that I would, we, we could definitely bring something to them.
Okay.
Or notify them in some.
Yeah, I was thinking like some sort of text push or something along those lines.
Definitely.
Okay. Well, signage requires people to pay attention to signs and people don't pay attention to signs. So.
They may not drive past there every day.
Yeah.
I mean, a text push notification would be great and we could even set that up to where, hey, we're, I could send that out 24 hours in advance that, hey, we're going to pour tomorrow, you know, same type of thing to give them some, some advance notice that this is what's happening.
Okay. I'm going to break the third wall here and just ask, does that sound like something that would be beneficial to you folks in that, in that area or no? Okay. Well, maybe we will be able to get it to work. Okay. That, that is all I had as far as follow-up questions.
Ms. City Attorney and then Council Davis.
Just wanted to hop in real fast. Apologies to interrupt the discussion, but once we're done with questions and discussions, I'd like to walk us through what the code says are the grounds on which you may or are, but are not required to grant a noise variance and conditions that would prohibit you from granting noise variance so that we can make sure that we have very clear findings. And my recommendation in fact is going to be to you guys to come to your preliminary decision based on those grounds and the findings and then ask staff to memorialize that decision in writing, written findings to bring back to you at a future council meeting, maybe the next regular council meeting to review and adopt it that way. But please continue your questions. I just didn't want to lose track of that part.
Thank you for that. Council Davis?
Thank you. That will help once we get that. But Don, we can, if we wanted to start at six and can we shorten the time to nine? Can we go six to nine? If we're starting, if we start, the variance is going at six o'clock in the morning, can we also shorten it at night to nine o'clock?
Not falling.
Six in the morning till nine at night.
I mean, that's. But our city noise variant, or noise.
City's already 10.
City's 10.
No, that's what I'm asking, Don. Can we shorten it to, if we're going to start early.
No, citywide is 10.
No, I see what he's doing. He's saying if they're going to start earlier, then they should end.
End earlier.
So Council Davis is really saying there still would be a variance, but with the condition of that variance being the book hour, bookend hours would be 9:00 PM instead of 10:00 PM.
Correct.
I don't see a reason why we could not condition that, but I, I think that's for discussion for council to, to make.
Okay. Any, any other questions for these gentlemen? Thank you. Appreciate you guys sitting here and taking our questions. Emily, I'll turn it over to you to walk us through what we can and can't do.
Okay. And this isn't going to be the most polished presentation. I've done this on the fly. But based on your code, council can, doesn't have to, but can grant noise variances. The one.
Can you talk a little bit louder, please?
I'll move in closer. Is that better?
Thank you.
Okay. So based on your code, you may grant variance, noise variances, but you're not required to. It's discretionary. The one area where you're discretion, a couple of areas where your discretion is limited is that you cannot grant a noise variance that would be materially detrimental to other property. So if you get over that, you know, first layer of what you can't do, then you may grant variances on the following grounds. If you find that strict compliance with the rural regulations or order is inappropriate because of conditions beyond the control of the persons requesting the variance. Because of special circumstances which would render strict compliance unreasonable or unpractical due to special physical conditions or cause. Because strict compliance would result in substantial curtailment or closing down of a business plant or operation. Because no other alternative facility or method of handling is yet available. So those are the grounds where you may grant a variance. And when you're considering the situation, the code requires you to consider the following factors, which are also in, in Don's staff report. The protection of health, safety and welfare of citizens as well as the feasibility and cost of noise abatement. The surrounding type of existing land use. The acoustical nature of the sound emitted and whether compliance with the provision would produce a benefit to the public. So that was a lot of words I can re-explain and restate as needed, but that's the, the parameters for your decision right there.
Yes, Council Maldonado.
Can you repeat the acoustic part?
The acoustical nature of the sound emitted.
Can, any chance you can kind of delve a little deeper on that one?
That is all the code says. Sorry, two more things. So you can grant a noise variance if you find grounds appropriate to do that. You can also revoke or modify a granted noise variance at your discretion.
So we will reduce it?
Yes. So you could grant something and then change it in the future. Any, any changed noise variance, of course, would still have to meet the minimum requirements that I just read to you.
Okay.
Yes, Council Waterman.
So I'm trying to understand where we're at in this process. Is this, are we talking, are we discussing options right now or like?
Suggested possible options for this or whatnot or recommend, or actual individual recommendations?
No, thank you for that because I was digesting that thought when Emily's giving us a breakdown. The site director for Pearlau, and I'm sorry, sir, yes, you, I've, I've forgotten your name.
Ray.
Ray, thank you. Could you come back up here a second? So obviously a lot of, a lot of conversation tonight on this and, you know, granted, we've got, you know, four, four citizens that gave comment on tonight, which, you know, in my, in, in my time here has found that that usually represents, you know, a multiplier depending on what the issue is. But the four have seemed like, are, seems like there's an ask of can it start at 6:00? Is that an amendable start time to the project?
I guess, does that mean we would start pouring at 6:00 and be able to start a crew at 5:00 or, I mean.
When does the noise start?
The, the main noise would start at 6:00 if, when we start raining trucks, right? What we'd be doing is turning on lights, stuff like that. And I know the light concerns. We could even, you know, wait a half an hour before, but we have to get lights on in order for our pump truck and stuff like that to pull in. I mean, we could do our best. We could, if, if that's what we're willing, you guys are willing to do for us, obviously it's not ideal for us, but I know it's not ideal for anyone else as well. We could try that, see how it works out. We may still end up having to reduce our slabs or whatever we have to do, but anything that we can get is going to help, obviously.
So you're saying a 5:00 AM like setup time and then start pouring at 6:00?
We got a compromise here, folks.
Okay. Thank, that, that was my question. So Council Waterman?
I had one more thing. I messed up earlier when I was, when everyone kind of got mad at me there for saying, but, but right away from it that I was talking about, it's not Sequoia. It, it was Malino Road.
Uh-oh.
That we're working on trying to get.
Oh, yeah, you can tear that Malino all you want. That's county road. We don't care. Go for it.
So we would, we would try to get an access into Malino Road, which I think would help some of the.
That would definitely be a, I mean, yeah, that would help immensely. And then, yeah, the next, you guys aren't responsible for doing anything on Malino Road, are you?
Yes, we are doing a half a per unit on Malino.
Fabulous. So that whole stretch, feel free to tear it all up. Council Waterman?
So thank you, Emily. You're, that really helped because so far what I've heard tonight is that there is noise, damage, issues to the community. And also what I have heard and seems admittedly from construction that there is, that going a little bit longer overall in general is not unfeasible. And so there is an issue and there is nothing preventing the construction from going a little bit longer, which seems everybody agrees with. And so I'm not seeing an, really an, an issue, honestly, any, any issues there being able to go a little bit longer and not having to get started at 3:00 in the morning. And everything seems to meet the requirements of the code in, in that aspect. So that, in a sense, I don't even see us even, not that we wouldn't, but I don't even see anything that would even require us even having to make a variance at all based on the requirements of the code. So just putting that out there.
Maybe on the front end.
Right.
Yeah.
So.
Well, and, you know, that's the, no, and that's a good point. I'll let, you, Council Maldonado, you got another thought or question?
Actually, I do. So we're able to go back and modify the variance if need be. Are they able to request a modification?
Yes.
Uh, yeah. There's nothing that would prohibit them from.
So they're able to request a modification. So if they, if they were to start the 6:00 AM or 7:00 AM and they did build some sort of a noise barrier that greatly reduced the amount of the noise, at that point, would they then be able to come back and request a modification showing the proof of the noise level being dropped considerably?
There's nothing in the code that would prevent that.
Council Patton?
So are we to the deliberation phase of this now?
We're in the discussion part.
Okay, we're in the discussion part. Okay. So I've been kind of scribbling here some, some thoughts as all this has been going on. And I'm just going to throw this out here as this is what's kind of rolling around in my head. I am sympathetic to what's going on there. I will say that when Lampro Steel and this project originally came across the desk of the planning commission, I was a planning commissioner and I approved those, I approved this project as a planning commissioner as well as Lampro Steel. And we were told by Lampro Steel at that time that they were going to make all these efforts to ensure that they didn't do all this noise and stuff and they put up the fancy barriers and stuff. And it sounds like that did not work as planned. And so I am taking what I've learned from that and you and putting it into this here. At the same time, I am, understand, my father worked in construction for many years pouring highways in New York. So I understand doing that work in the winter and I understand what you folks are up against as far as needing to make money on your project and needing to do it as quickly as possible. So in an effort to try and meld these together, these, this is kind of what I have envisioned. Originally I was thinking the 5:00 AM start time so that they would be able to start the actual work at 6:00. I would say, what, what I'm thinking is 5:30 AM start time, 10:00 PM shut-off, as we currently have laid out in the system. There needs to be a concerted effort monitored by the city that notifications are made to the, to the residents if there is going to be an overage of that 10:00 PM and that they have a, a free access point to the city to let us know if that is not working. The other thing I would say is that instead of doing this from December 1st through February 2nd, I would prefer to see this be granted a timeframe of December 1st through January 2nd. And then if they wish to, then they would need to come in and get a, a new variance. And at that point in time, it would give the citizens an opportunity to come back in and give us an update about how this relationship is going. Because one of the problems I have with this process is once we do the thing, there's no, there's very little going back. Once the bread is in the oven, it's hard to take the flour back out of the loaf, right? And that is the problem that we have, is that they can complain to the city and the city can come back to us as a council to say that they're upset, but then we got to go through a whole nother process. So that is what I, that is what I am, I am throwing out for people's consideration. 5:30 AM start time, hard 10:00 PM stop with notifications if every once in a while it needs to go past that with the citizens letting us know that that is working and only allowing the variance for a one-month period. So that way we have a hard check-in after that one month. And then by, by that time, the construction company should have a better understanding of whether they're going to need to go out an extra month or whatever with their pours. And so that way we keep a much closer eye on this as it develops rather than throwing it out into the ether and hoping for the best.
Emily?
Don, current hard stop is 10:00 PM in the code, right? So if we're proposing a 10:00 PM shut-off with the occasional opportunity to go over that, is that then granting a variance that allows them?
That would be granting a variance.
To go over 10?
No, 10 o'clock is.
10 o'clock's the hard stop. If they have to go past it, that's.
No, but I thought 10 o'clock is our.
It is.
But he's, he's stating that if they have to go past that to send out some sort of a notification, but if they do that, that's still granting a variance.
Right.
And the reason, the reason I'm saying, the reason I'm saying this is because it is highly unlikely that every single one of these pours is going to go exactly to plan. And so it is highly likely that from time to time, they are going to have a problem that needs to be addressed. And I am not willing to have a company throw out thousands of dollars in concrete because they might need a half an hour to finish up what they're doing. But I'm not willing to let that happen every single time they pour. There needs to be some, because what I don't want to see is them to just do the thing and then, I would much rather see us be proactive with that communication rather than reactive with the communication. That's why I'm throwing that out.
No, I hear you. My understanding from Ray's explanation is that any concrete that's going to be poured is going to be done first part of the day. So there isn't going to be any concrete pouring that's going to stretch them past 10 o'clock at night.
Well, no, but there's going to be the work curing and cutting. The cutting is what will probably end up taking in time. And then once the cutting is done, they have to clean all the equipment and stuff because that will gel up in the machines and it'll become a mess and all that stuff. So that's where that noise could come from. So that is just what I'm throwing out there.
No, we have to start somewhere.
Interested to hear what other people have to say.
Ms. Emily?
So thinking about how to draft that, if that is council's direction, would that be a variance that permits the occasional going past 10:00 PM conditioned upon sufficient advance notice to whomever's within that radius of advanced notice or?
I, I wouldn't even worry about the 10 o'clock. I, I, hard stop 10 o'clock, no variance on that. That's, that's too much to worry about. And besides the point, 10:00 PM, there, there has to be a hard stop there anyways. They know when, when they're going to start cleaning their equipment. They know all of that as the day's going on. It's, everything's projected. So 10:00 PM, that's a hard stop. I, I don't want to sit here and keep people up any longer than they need to be kept up whenever we're already asking to wake them up earlier.
And Council Maldonado.
I'm just throwing out my ideas.
I get it.
Say whatever you want.
I get it.
Council Maldonado, do you have an opinion on the, and when you say start time, Council Patton, you mean they're on-site starting to set up so that they can then start pouring at 6:30?
Correct.
If it's an hour setup, Ray, is that what I'm kind of hearing? Okay. So 5:30 roll on-site, start setting up, 6:30, their first truck can start pouring?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, you said it could be done in a half hour, so they might pour as early as 6:00.
So I can turn the lights on at half hour, but we need to be on-site an hour and.
Correct. Yeah. And the hour, the hour predating pouring is, the noise level's still minimal. It's, you're, you're not having a whole lot of noise anyways. And who, I'm sorry, who got the number 85 decibels?
I am throwing out the number.
Okay. Eighty, 80 to 85 decibels is your general typical car exhaust noise. It ranges anywhere between 80 to 110 decibels. I think the Officer True, our Chief True, is the legal limit 110?
I don't know.
All right. However, that, that aside, I, I agree. I think about 6, 6:00 AM actual starting. However, that, that aside, I agree, I think about 6:00 AM actual starting, get the guys there early, but 6:00 AM actual start pouring, I think that's an acceptable time. I understand the plight on both sides, and it's horrible, but there does have to be a give and take. From my understanding, we've had, we've got a good rapport with you guys, and I know that you guys are not going to sit here and try to do anything to ruin that by disturbing everybody. I know you're gonna do everything within your ability to not do that. So I'm good with the 6:00 AM.
Oh, you're not 5:30?
Well, 6:00 AM pours.
6:00 AM pours.
Gotcha, so 5:30 start time.
5:00 to 5:30 for the guys to show up onsite and get everything ready to start pouring and then start making the noise, yeah.
6 o'clock noise.
Okay. Yes, Council President.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I don't see why they, I actually, with Councilor Maldonado, absolutely no later than 10 because I'm reading the request. It says 3:00 AM to 7:00 AM would be the pour with overall construction being from 3:00 to 7:00 PM, 7:00 PM. So if we're gonna take two hours away, we give them two hours on the other end, they don't need to go past 9 o'clock, so hard stop at 10.
Well, again, the original ask was 3:00 AM to 7:00.
Right, so that's why I'm not willing to give a variance on the 10 o'clock.
I don't think, okay. So you're a 5:30 to 10er?
Well, to a niner, but yeah.
Okay, I gotcha. Yes, Counsel Sterns.
Yeah, looking at you listening, I think there's a couple of concerns out there and we have to kinda make a little bit of adjustments overall. I think there's some concern about the future tenants and what activity will go there, I don't know.
That'll be a totally different conversation.
Yeah, I realize it was, but I think that, that one of the concerns was also some concerns about Lampros. That probably should be a discussion we should have about noise at a different time. But I just wanna acknowledge that what I'm hearing, not necessarily that I'm proposing, but that those are things that we can discuss and help out the residents. Starting, of course, later, exasperates the problem with trucks being around during school, going to school, you know, hours. So that's not gonna make that any better, but it could give them some more sleep for the kids. I'm thinking if you start the noise at 6:30, I mean, most of your elementary school kids have to be up by that time anyway, so it might even give a help to the parents to rouse the kids out of bed, at least from my experience. So my suggestion would be to have a 5:30 start time. That means they start the pour, or the trucks come rumbling in at 6:30 and wake up the kids for school.
Okay. Okay.
You tallying yours?
Yeah. I've done this before. Yeah. Any other discussion pieces? Here's, oh, sorry, Counsel Waterman.
I was just gonna say, if we're going around giving, I'm on board with that same thing.
Okay. Yeah, I, this is one of those, and I appreciate, because I don't live in Timber Park, but I am the other side of T-Coide there. And one of my favorite stories to tell is when I first moved to Camby, my wife and I looked at the house that we live in now, like 3:00 in the afternoon, and there were two other couples there looking at our house. So we didn't get to drive around Camby to find out that there's a gun club and that there's a, an industrial park not very far away from where we were looking to move into. So we move in and, you know, our first warm July evening that we're in our house with the windows open, I'm hearing the pop, pop, pop of the gun club. Having lived in Southern California, my wife had to call me out from underneath the table. But my neighbor across the street informed me, he was like, well, we have, we have the gun club right over, over there. And I'm like, he's like, well, didn't your realtor tell you? Didn't you know that? And I was like, no, not at all. And my point being is, I mean, something like the gun club, very different than what we're talking about here, we have an industrial park. It is not, these are, I've got a couple of things that I'll follow up with Don and the council and Randy as we look at, as we grow in our industrial park, as we are growing as a community, looking at how do we plan for something like this in the future, right? Because we are budding up neighborhood by a trail, a bridge, a road, and then you're in the industrial park, right? And so these things come about with growth and we have these conversations and we have to course correct sometimes. I do hear the beeping of trucks from American Steel at 2:00 AM and I hear the, you know, the train rolling through Camby at 2:15 sometimes when it's laying on its whistle at North Pine there, but that's just part of, part of the Camby piece, I suppose. So I understand where you are all at with, you know, because I'm not far from where you are, and you're not much further than, you're a couple, what, two streets from me, so. But at the end of this, right, I mean, we're obviously, we're not gonna, you know, Pearl O and Tremble Crow is gonna get their, everything they want, and we all have to have a certain level of discomfort with where this is gonna end up. I appreciate the conversation and that you all showed up to say, hey, you know, we got it, we got a situation here. I appreciate Pearl O and Tremble Crow, and you guys got a job to do and a building to build, and we're glad that you're here, you've chose Camby to, you know, to build your building and expand your businesses here or whatever you're going to attract, which I'm sure you'll work very closely with Jamie to bring in somebody fabulous into Camby that'll be a great neighbor as well. So we have these things come up and you all get to come and see what we deliberate over and how this works. So I appreciate that very much. Is there any discussion, is there someone prepared to make a motion?
Well, are we, are we directing?
Are we making a motion, are we directing, are we solidifying the plan and then?
They're bringing it back.
They're gonna draft the motion that we approve the next time?
I think we need to approve.
That's my recommendation. I also want to confirm that I've correctly heard variance parameters from what consensus is right now.
Look, consensus right now, it sounds like a start time of 5:30 with the hard stop at 10:00 PM.
Okay.
Yes.
I would, I would like to just bring up for consideration to see if others are interested in just having this variance go for a month so that we have a hard stop to be able to then have folks come back in and hear their voices be heard, rather than stick, rather than waiting two months to hear if there's a problem.
I honestly think that if there's, if there's gonna be any problems, oh, sorry. I honestly think that if there's gonna be any problems, we're to hear about that before, before a month.
Well, yeah, but then these folks can't come in and talk about that.
We can make it an agenda item as a, as a check, as a check-in.
I'm overruled.
Well, I think.
It's not overruling, I mean, it's, having a touch base make, is not a bad, bad practice in something like this. I'm not saying that, I just think, you know, we can, if something's going wrong and we need to course correct in January, we can still do that and find out where they're at. They may only need another two weeks because it's not gonna rain in Camby.
And on the flip side, on the flip side about, I'd love to hear their input after about a month or so, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, it doesn't rain in Otzen, it doesn't rain in Camby, right? So, yes, Counsel Sterns.
I think the idea of having it only go for a month was probably a mistake because what could happen is the construction company could just have a hard stop while we tried to agenda and put everything together, because for practical purposes, if it ended up in, that, have it end in, you know, January 2nd, then you'd have to have some sort of meeting around Christmas time just to give them permission to plan for work afterwards. And so I think, I think the better approach would be to give them, and I think, you know, I wouldn't mind having them do for a longer duration if we're giving them a shorter time for these pours, but if we want, if there's a problem, that we just address it and ask for a variance of the variance or whatever you call it, to, during the project. Because I just don't see it to be very fair to force them to stop, cancel, you know, projects while we have to worry about scheduling something and.
Yes, Emily.
Um, just to that point, so the code doesn't require that you wait till the end of a variance, noise variance period to consider whether to modify or revoke it. The only procedural timeline there is you have to have a hearing like we're doing here, and there has to be at least 20 days notice advance of the hearing.
So if there's an issue, we would find out about it and then 20 days later, schedule something?
I just thought of this, and I apologize, throw a wrench on that. So it's a great idea except for one problem. Their work is literally weather-dependent, so if they're not able to do a whole lot in that first month, then we're not gonna get real good data from that.
I guess, I mean, they're asking for two months, I mean, one month is.
If they get, if they.
I'm not willing to, I'm not going to die on that sword.
Okay.
I will just throw out, I would like to, one thing that frustrates me about this process is similar to other things that we are dealing with where the whole power situation, I really would like to see developers figure out if they can in fact get a variance before they figure out all their plans, rather than figuring out all their plans and saying, oh, now we need a variance. I don't know if that's at all possible, but I think that's a seed to plant because that seems to, that is one of the problems, is that the thing is approved, they start going forward, and then all of it's like, oh, you know, now we're broken ground and we're doing all this stuff and now we need this noise variance. Well, my guess is they knew they were gonna need that noise variance before the project even started. And so how do we figure out getting those, those identified in advance before the cat is out of the bag?
Yes, Mr. Ely.
Um, Mr. Ray, I would just say, scheduling, if you have consensus on a new variance of ours, we don't meet again for two weeks, so I don't know what the decision is here about delaying the vote, but we don't meet for two weeks. So if you know what you wanna do, if legal counsel's behind you, you can do it tonight, but if, if we're waiting two weeks, I don't know what that does to the construction schedule.
Oh, because it's an ordinance, it would be two, it would be a first and a second reading, so.
I don't know.
Wouldn't get second reading to the first.
Nope, it'd be a resolution.
This is a resolution.
It could be a resolution. Oh, then we could do it in two weeks and still be before their timeframe.
Okay.
Yeah, so no need, so my, it's only my recommendation to send it back to staff. No need to do it, but if you wanna do it tonight, then we gotta spend a little more time talking through exactly the code-based grounds that you're making this finding on, which I'll, I'll read you everything again if you want me to. Also, I think you have, not to add more good ideas to the pile, but I think you have a work session next week?
We do have a work session next week, yes.
We're thinking about scheduling that.
Yeah, so, I mean, is that, I guess to staff's point, can that be those findings and that?
Good next week.
Be ready to go for?
We'd have to add it.
A one-item city council meeting?
Uh, if I'm doing it, then yes, I can have it done for next week, but I would check in with other staff if they're gonna be the ones to it.
Ray, can I have you come back to the microphone? Sorry, I've just adopted you as the spokesperson. Just make them buy you coffee tomorrow, okay? So is what you're hearing, is that, is that, obviously, it's not what you guys want, but does that work?
We will, we will do our best to make that work. We will make it work. We will stop at 10 if I have to shorten the pours a little bit or whatever I gotta do, but I do appreciate you guys working with us to the best of your capability and the community. So yeah, we will do the best we can to make sure that we do our, our part in all of this.
Well, and I think somebody had said it earlier, you know, Pearl has been a great partner in our community over the years doing a lot of things, and I think you guys do a great job of listening to the community, so I do appreciate that aspect. And so I do, I know it's not a total win, you know, could you get everything you want in this, but it sounds like you're making some good concessions in that regards as well, so, so I appreciate that, so thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Smith, can I have you come up here? I'm gonna officially make you the spokesperson of the people, you know, just because you're, I'll dig the beard. I know it's not, I know it's not everything that everyone was just addressing, is this a, I think, looking over your head to everyone else, is this a, it's not a total win, but is this a manageable piece?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, great. I appreciate everyone coming together and helping us get, get this worked out, so thank you, gentlemen. Let's make sure that we figure out the push communication. I think if anyone's gonna be able to do it effectively, I think Pearl O can, so I'm not sure how we get that, how you get that set up, I'll leave that for you guys to figure out, but let's.
If we could get a sign-up sheet from the community or through you guys or something where we get everybody's number, then I can, we can make that happen.
Well, you shared your number, and I'm sure it'll be up on Camby now, which is a very popular Facebook page here. And it's always factual, there's nothing ever slanted, ever. It's a very good hybrid mix between Fox News and CNN. That will, I'm sure they'll get you that information, for sure, so.
And with the few members that we do have here, I'm sure the word's gonna spread like wildfire.
And us officially approving this next week still gives latitude for you guys to schedule your schedule?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. We'll, if you guys can, if we can get ready for next week, we'll add it onto the work session for next week.
So just, curiously, was the agreement for 5:30 or 5:00 for the start? I wasn't sure.
I, everyone here said 5:30.
Okay, 5:30 for.
Like showing up onsite.
5:30.
Starting to get warmed up and then pouring would start.
6:30 or?
Ish, yeah, right in that window.
6:30, whenever they can get it going.
And then Emily, our attorney, will figure out if, we've got, she'll verbalize, create the verbiage for us to work it all out, so.
All the words.
Thank you, thank you, thank you all, really appreciate it. Great. Ooh, a handshake too. All right, great.
That's the Camby way.
I should go do the next piece of court. Thanks, Maldonado, I appreciate it. Thanks, Pepe. Okay.
All right, I'm slipping around a lot.
All right, we are gonna move on to our next, so item eight tonight is ordinances and resolutions. So item A, ordinance number 1658, an ordinance authorizing interim city administrator to execute a service agreement with Directlink for the renewal of voice connect services for the city of Camby. Mr. Ely.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'd like to kick it to our transit director, our IT director in this case, Mr. Todd Wood, and Ellie.
Hi, Ellie, it's good to see you.
Good to see you too.
Mr. Wood.
We've definitely got a plan that are ordinances. No, thank you. As you are aware, the city has a telephone system that we use for, you know, phone calls. And we've been a customer of Directlink forever and ever, amen. But over the years, you know, we've had various agreements, that agreement lapsed actually several years ago, and we've been paying month to month since then, and it's quite expensive to pay month to month versus having an agreement. Because of the way procurement laws are set and because of the fact that most telephone systems are now voice-over IP and no longer locked to a specific carrier, we had to go out and do a whole lot of work to make sure that we got the proper bids and the city was paying properly for the best service for our city. And I have to give Ellie 100% credit. This has taken her six-plus months of calling vendors, meeting with vendors, touring vendors, and then going back and forth with various people to try to get us the best price, and she's done a fantastic job. The best bid for us came out from Directlink. We currently have their equipment, so that saves us a lot of money, and we'll save about $1,000, slightly more than that, but about $1,000 a month on our telephone bill as long as we stick with them for five years, and I don't anticipate us making that change. So what you have in front of you is a five-year contract for our current services. We've added a couple of things, transit has requested, I guess that would be me, has requested the recording of some of our phone lines for customer service purposes, so we added that to this. And then there's a few, all the telephones that we have in the city right now are no longer supported, so Directlink is supplying all new telephones at no cost, and then some of our switches need to be upgraded, and they're gonna take care of that as well. So that's what this is. This is a five-year contract to continue our current. This is a five-year contract to continue our current telephone services, but at a better rate than we're currently paying.
So is, so this is not VoIP?
It is VoIP.
And we, that is the switch we're...
We have a handful of hard lines, like alarm systems and a few others that are still on the POTS system that can't go VoIP, so they provide those. This also does not include our fiber, that's a completely separate contract. This is just our, our telephone system, which ironically is carried over the fiber, but that's a separate contract, but...
Okay.
So this includes all the voicemail, all the telephones, any other, we have some folks that have the ability to transfer their phones to their laptops and use their laptops as their telephone.
Oh, wow.
I think there's a fax.
There's a fax, a couple of faxes. It includes all our alarm systems. So, yeah, really, really what this is about is trying to save us $1,000 a month, right?
Get some new phones out of it.
And get some new, get some new phones that Harley uses these days, but, you know.
Are there any questions on the motion before someone gives a motion? Yes?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance...
That's not what I asked. I asked if there were any questions that were needed before the motion. Do you have a question?
And you looked that way, and you looked this way, and there was no questions, so I was going to make a motion.
You had your hand up, do you have a question? No questions?
No.
Great, I will, yes, Councilor Patton, would you like to make a motion?
I move to adopt ordinance number, he's totally busting my chops here, I love it, ordinance number 1658, an ordinance authorizing the interim city administrator to execute a service agreement with Directlink for the renewal of VoIP, Voice Connect service for the city of Canby to a second reading on November 19th, 2025.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilor Patton and seconded by Council President Hensley to approve ordinance number 1658, an ordinance authorizing the interim city administrator to execute a service agreement with Directlink for the renewal of Voice Connect services for the city of Canby to a second reading on November 19th, 2025. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
That's it.
Carry 6-0. Thank you, guys, appreciate it. Item B this evening is, item, resolution 1446, a resolution authorizing the interim city administrator to enter into an intergovernmental agreement, an IGA, with Clackamas County relating to the Walnut Street Extension Project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Jamie. Brief setup and introduction, then I have a friendly amendment to the motion.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Jamie Stickell, Economic Development Director, and for a second piece related to the Walnut Street Extension, we have resolution 1446 before you this evening, and this is authorizing the interim city administrator to enter into an intergovernmental agreement, or more commonly referred to as an IGA, with Clackamas County relating to the Walnut Street Extension Project. This item supports the city council goal to plan a transportation system that eases the impacts of growth. A connection between the Canby Pioneer Industrial Park and Highway 99 has been identified and included in the city's transportation plan for quite some time, and this specific project was included in the 2019 TSP, Transportation System Plan Amendment. The Walnut Street Extension is an infrastructure initiative designed to improve connectivity, traffic flow, and safety in southeast Canby. The project extends from south Walnut Street, or, excuse me, the project extends south Walnut Street from southeast First Avenue, so the road that goes in front of Columbia Distributing and the OLCC project, and will continue to Highway 99, which will serve existing businesses and residents, as well as future businesses and residents. ORS 190.010 authorizes local governments to enter into IGAs to perform functions and activities otherwise authorized by law, such as building roads outside of your jurisdiction. And this IGA will allow for the city of Canby to build the Walnut Street Extension on land outside of the city limits and annex it into the city after the road is complete. While the extension is outside city limits, it is located within the city's current urban growth boundary. The IGA acknowledges these pieces, as well as the terms of the project, noting the city will acquire permitting and maintenance responsibility before the land is annexed by the city of Canby. It will acquire jurisdiction over the land after the city annexes the property, and finally, it provides the mechanism for the county to surrender jurisdiction over a county road within a city to a city. It's important to note that this road will be built to city standards, so no additional work will be needed to be completed or redone in order for the city to take over the road. Oftentimes, when we bring a county road before you, there are some standards, building it to the city's standards will sidestep that. And then this agreement outlines the city's responsibilities, as well as Clackamas County's responsibilities, and how the transfer of those responsibilities will be rolled out through development and after annexation. The two options before you this evening are to approve resolution 1446, or deny resolution 1446, and city staff recommends that council approve resolution 1446, a resolution authorizing the interim city administrator to approve the Walnut Street intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas County.
Great. Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you for that. So just, we've talked about this in the past, this agreement written and proposed by Clackamas County, reviewed by their legal counsel, and then reviewed by our legal counsel, so that's the version that you are looking at. So we've served that volley back to county. I don't anticipate any major changes, but our legal counsel has advised that if someone who makes the motion could add a little narrative to the motion, and I'll hand it out, that would be great, just in case the county comes back with any change that allows myself and our legal counsel to adopt the IGA.
Jason's closer.
Can I do it?
Yeah, so, it's, I highlighted it.
Oh, jeez, I didn't have it.
I even highlighted it for you.
So Jamie and Randy, so how's this, how's this differ for us at the council versus at the Urban Renewal Agency?
Well, the Urban Renewal Agency earlier tonight was an easement that you approved.
Thank you.
Yep, this is, this is the intergovernmental agreement that just allows you to build a street in a county area.
Gotcha, thank you.
You're urbanizing in an unincorporated Clackamas County.
Got it.
And that's why they would like us to put some words down on paper to do that.
Got it.
Okay.
Any questions for Ms. Stickell or Mr. Ely?
No.
Okay.
All right, Jason's up.
So Jason, you have the motion.
Okay, so am I just tacking this on at the end of what's written here?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, you can stop me as I read if I'm wrong.
Go ahead and say it, and then...
So, I move to approve resolution number 1446, a resolution authorizing the interim city administrator to enter into an intergovernmental agency, or intergovernmental agreement, or IGA, with Clackamas County relating to Walnut Street Extension, the Walnut Street Extension Project, in...
Substantially the same form as presented.
Let me find that.
Yeah.
It's right at the beginning.
Plug it in.
In...
Oh, in a form substantially the same as presented, provided minor non-substantive changes may be made with approval of the city manager and the city attorney.
There you go.
I'll second that.
I'll pass that to you.
It's just saying that...
You got to read the green stuff.
Here, let me, let me read it for you, Councilor Stern, so you can hear it. So the motion's been made by Councilor Patton and seconded by Council President Hensley to approve resolution 1446, a resolution authorizing the interim city administrator to enter into an intergovernmental agreement, IGA, with Clackamas County relating to the Walnut Street Extension Project, in a form substantially the same as presented, provided minor non-substantive changes may be made with approval of the city manager and the city attorney. Any discussion or question?
You are, you are a linguistic genius.
It's not very good, I'm an attorney.
No discussion, everyone's good.
We're good.
Appreciate that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thank you.
Holy smokes, we got it done, 6-0. Pass that back to Mr. Ely, please, thank you. Item 8C is resolution number 1447, a resolution authorizing the interim city administrator to execute an intergovernmental agreement with Tri-County Metropolitan Transportation District of Oregon, otherwise known as TRIMET, for the disbursement of statewide transportation improvement funds, STIF, for fiscal years 2026 and 2027.
Mr. Wood? Hello, I'm back.
This is a good story. I feel like you should tell the story, this is...
I love TRIMET stories.
This is a good story.
Anyway...
And kudos to you for working this out, so good job, Todd.
So this was, this is, this has been an interesting agreement. As you are, most of you are aware, the state transportation improvement fund that was adopted in 2017 collects money from everybody's paycheck and allocates that for public transit, and in that, they determined that that money should go where people work, to the qualified entity in the area, which in our case just happens to be TRIMET. And then TRIMET is required to then distribute, distribute it based on an agreed-upon formula. They try to look at our payroll tax and give us roughly what they think we would have collected here, and so on and so forth. So in order to get that money, we have to enter into an IGA with TRIMET that says we will follow certain rules and regulations based on the way the IGA is done. This one is a little bit different in that TRIMET didn't want to have to redo the whole IGA, so it's the same IGA, but this is a modification of the IGA that we did last time, that basically says, we're going to do the same thing, but here's more money that we're adding to it. It's kind of the way this IG is written. Materially, there's not much we can do with the IGA, it is the way it is, so I can't really change it. There was an attempt by TRIMET to change it midstream, after some of the, the county had already signed it, and a couple of cities had signed it, so we, in solidarity with those folks, refused to sign, or I refused to bring it to you until the county had agreed to the, to the modifications which TRIMET eventually backed off on. So normally, we would see this all the way back in June or July, it is now November, so the money that we would have gotten dispersed in July, I have not gotten yet, because we wanted to hang, hang with our Clackamas County partners and say, we're not going to sign this until you agree to their terms, because if, as, as little bodies, we can only do so much, but as a collective, we can fight back against the larger behemoth that is, that is TRIMET. Anyway, all that to say, this is going to give us the $300,000 a year that we would have otherwise gotten earlier, so that we can continue to operate our Loop, which is doing fantastic. If you go to C4, we'll talk about it tomorrow, but just to give this council a minor update, the Loop is doing fantastic. We've done over 20,000 rides, we're looking to break maybe 30,000 this year. To give you an idea, the 99X does about 55,000, so our Loop is rapidly climbing in popularity. High school students use it for high school, because the bus doesn't pick them up, because they live too close, but they can ride our bus for free, it's being used for shopping, so it's very, very popular, and the STIF pays for that. It also pays for Saturday service, so that people who go to work on Saturdays, which is a lot of folks, have a bus to ride then. So it does good stuff for us. It also helps provide our dialeride service during the week, our elderly and disabled service. So this is important money for us, and so please agree to the IGA.
Well, thank you for standing with the rest of the transit groups here in Clackamas County. I'd spend, you know, having been on C, you know, being on C4 and hearing the, that conversation all the time, and yeah, TRIMET is the, is the 800-pound gorilla in the room, and so I don't like sending them money, because we get a fraction of what we probably should and have been, and so...
To, to be fair, it's the legislator that's the 800-pound gorilla.
Fact, you're right. I know, don't shoot the messenger.
TRIMET's just a 400-pound.
Well, TRIMET is the author of this program for the most part, but it is the legislator that enforces the rules, that requires TRIMET to be the QE, that requires them to distribute the money. We've been fighting that fight for, you know, since 2017, so...
Yeah, well, good work, I like it, appreciate it. Questions for Mr. Wood? Is there a motion? Oh, yes, sir.
I move to adopt resolution 1447, resolution authorizing interim city administrator to execute intergovernmental agreement, IGA, with Tri-County Metropolitan Transportation District of Oregon, TRIMET, for distribution of statewide transportation improvement funds, STIF, for fiscal years 2027 and 2028.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilor Waterman, seconded by Councilor Maldonado, to approve resolution number 1447, resolution authorizing the interim city administrator to execute an intergovernmental agreement with Tri-County Metropolitan Transportation District of Oregon for the disbursement of statewide transportation improvement funds, STIF, for fiscal years 2026 and 2027. Any discussion or comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes 6-0. Thank you, sir. Okay, item D, number 1448, since this is an interesting topic about repealing Canby City Council's policies and operation guidelines adopted in December of 2018, and adopting new policies and operating guidelines. It is quarter to 10. I have a couple of comments and questions in this document. I don't know if we want to continue this conversation, or table this, or, just throwing it out on the table based on the time, and still council comments and another bunch of items on the agenda, so...
I would just say, for me, we have been working on this for a long time.
Almost a year.
It's been delayed and delayed. I would really like to see this get over the finish line if possible tonight.
Okay.
I would like to, if, if it be possible, to continue the discussion to a different date, and the reason why is because I think as a city council, we should have our input and say on that, and since it's already passed the deadline for the meetings, that was already...
It's not instituted yet.
The, I, I just, and I would like to see like a red line copy to, to, to go through this, so that's my preference, be to have it continue to a different date, so we can have a robust discussion, work session, or have fun that way.
Yes, Emily.
I have a question about the red line. So what we can do, so the subcommittee started its work based on the CIS model rules, and then took it and then tweaked it. So the red line that we can run is to compare this draft before you today to the CIS model rules, and then you'll see how the model rules got tweaked.
So that's, so it would be good to compare with the, with the...
It would be a total blanket of red. It would be not, yeah. If there's another way that staff can work on a comparison of what's in effect now versus what is being proposed, let staff know, and we can do that, staff can do that for you. I just don't think the red line is the right mechanism for it.
Because I was, I mean, I was just, when I read through it, I was like, well, what's this different than what's, what we have already, and that was kind of what I was wanting to get at, and what's the reason for the difference?
Great question. A comparison table, perhaps, I'm just throwing out ideas, but if there's something else that we can do for that, let us know.
Council President, what have you ever thought?
Well, my subcommittee colleagues can probably correct me if I'm wrong, but I think largely the difference is you'll find, if you want to read the sections, we, we shored up and actually instituted, or memorialized, I should say, the process for appointment of a counselor. That wasn't previously in our process before. There were a few little housekeeping things we took out, as far as like attendance and things like that. We didn't make any major changes that I can think of, other than the appointments, and you had a little thing we added.
So I think, I think the way to look at this is, when, when we originally started this project, as Emily had said, we had our original guidelines, and then it was present, Eileen had presented to us and said, hey, here is the model guidelines from the League of Oregon Cities. I recommend you use this as your boilerplate, and then improve upon it and fold those things from the current policy that you like into this one. And so this policy is substantially larger, page-wise, than what the original one was, because there's a lot of things that were not memorialized in our original one that are now in here. There's a lot of standard operating procedures that were not memorialized. There's a lot of standard operating procedures that were not memorialized in that one that are in here. Things like how the meeting is supposed to be run is mostly, was something that was not laid out very specifically in the boilerplate one, but was brought over into this one. As Council President Hensley said, the process for appointing a city counselor. Another one, there's some major changes in the comment cards and the comments and the public comment section. So, essentially, in our original policies and operating guidelines, the public comment section was essentially a bit of a free-for-all. Whereas now, there are some guardrails put on that to say that there are, that you need to be civil, you need to stick to the topic, and if you don't, you can be told that you're done. Also, the card that people fill out went under some major modifications to get more information about who's making the comments, where they stand on the issue, and then add some lines behind it so that if someone is going to pool time, they have to put the names of the people that they are pooling time from on the back of the card so that we have that. And then also putting some guardrails to say we can really only do 30 minutes of public comment rather than an unlimited amount of public comment. Another one that's in here that was not in the others, which stayed intact from the OLC or from the League of Oregon Cities one, was that with our, with our second readings, we essentially treat them just like the original readings, where every single one of them is done individually. This actually provides a mechanism where if a second reading was a unanimous vote, all of those second readings can be put in essentially something similar to our consent agenda, where all the second readings are done in one block and we just approve all the second readings at once rather than going through each individual one separately in an effort to expedite the meetings. Also, putting in a stop time of nine o'clock with a check-in to say, you know, if we need a little bit more time, can we do it and go from there? So, those are really some of the major, the major ones. Now, what was taken out from the previous one that we saw several months ago was there was some language in there about reprimanding city counselors and those sort of things. A lot of that stuff ran afoul of the city charter, so that came out. There was a couple of other things that ran afoul of the city charter. That came out. Another thing was, we had laid out a lot of the details about public hearings in here. But instead, this essentially, a lot of this says, refer to the city charter or these other documents for those processes. So, that way, if the planning commission chooses to change the way they do a public hearing for like annexation or whatever, and that's kicked to us, we will always use the same processes as the planning commission, even if they make changes to how they do theirs on their end. So, that is some of the ones, those are some of the highlights as far as changes and stuff in this document.
Yeah, this is the second time it's come to you guys. Because like you said, it came back to us. We took out the stuff that ran afoul of the charter. There's some housekeeping stuff in there, too, where we did address Zoom, which obviously wasn't in the old policy. There's some language in there about Zoom now. Other than that, it's the same document that you saw a couple of months or more ago. When did, when did we have it?
It was a few months ago.
It was a few months ago.
And if there's some specific questions, we can, you know, we can, we can touch, we can touch base on those.
No, I was just saying, because it's. I did have, like, one question on it. There's a lot of it, honestly, a lot of it comes around the public comment section. And part of it, I absolutely agree with, and I'm happy that it's in here. You know, any issues dealing with employment, that's not our jurisdiction, et cetera. But in general, the public comment seems to, or, I don't know if it seems, it does, it kind of limits public comment in words to only things that the city council actually deliberates on or has business with. So, we also use public comments for citizen updates and announcements and stuff like that. And so, I'm sure we wouldn't limit that, but according to the way it's written, it doesn't allow.
Refer what page you're talking about, please?
It's the public, it's literally the public comment, citizen input.
Thank you. Okay, see it.
Well, and so to that point, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought that we had baked into here language to say that public comment is one thing, but if people are coming in to do a presentation, that essentially falls into a different category. Like, for instance, the folks that came in tonight to do their presentation, rather than them having to go through the process and.
They did public, no, it's public comment. They took time.
Well, yes, but what I'm saying is, is that if they want to do a presentation like that, instead of having to use a public comment avenue, they could work with city staff to actually have a place on the agenda to do their presentation.
So, that's really different than some of the discussions that have been going on recently, too. So.
Well, that, and it was under the staff's purview as to whether it'd be a presentation or, yeah.
Yeah, so that's, that part, the presentation option plus how to do it, that's going to be separate. There are some legal considerations that staff needs to work through pretty closely and carefully before we bring that. So, the idea was, we talked about the subcommittee a little bit about this, flagged a couple of areas of legal concern to look into more. If those areas turned out to be, you know, a bit of a bear that they have turned out to be, then the idea was just to get this across the line and then circle back to do the presentation separately. But that's not necessarily directly on point with what you were talking about. That was just a little bit of the process.
Well, I mean.
You're talking about Item 1, where it says, limited to purposes of hearing the public about matters directly related to the business of the city that is within the council's jurisdiction. This is actually further in that paragraph. It addresses, basically what it was, was they don't want us, they don't want people coming here and talking to us about employment issues.
And I think that's what you already do. So, the mayor opens the public comment period by saying we're accepting public comment on items on the agenda? Or do I have that backwards?
Not on the agenda.
Not on the agenda, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so disregard.
Yeah, because if they've got something that they want to make comment on, then we basically punt them to when that topic comes up.
That agenda item.
Because there's two paragraphs. There's the part that you referred to. There's a separate paragraph for the talk about public comment on matters outside the scope of county jurisdiction, such as employment.
Yeah, that's Paragraph 1, E1, right? Is that what you're talking about? It continues on Page 4.
I had copied that section out into my own personal notes.
Oh, okay.
Because the part that says, it just says, "Public comment during council meetings is not an absolute right." Rather, the council permit public comment only for limited purposes of hearing from the public about matters directly related to the business of the city and that is within the council's jurisdiction. Public comment period is limited, is a limited public forum of comments are therefore appropriately limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are, which may become, come before the council. So, that section right there is just general public comment as far as I could tell in the document. And so, that doesn't leave, that literally is like a less word, it's something worth deliberating on or doing something with. So, it's kind of like not on the agenda. So, it's kind of confusing to me.
I'd say that matters of concern is pretty broad. Like, hearing from, I apologize, I don't recall the organization that came and spoke during public comment. But like, you know, public health and safety is a public, is a concern for council and drug use in Canby is a public health and safety concern.
The drive behind that paragraph is the rest of this paragraph that continues to say, the council is not creating an opportunity for and will not accept public comment on matters that fall outside the scope of the council's jurisdiction, such as employment issues related to employees and officers who are not appointed or supervised by council. That's the rest of the paragraph.
And I will, I will just throw out there that a majority, from what I remember, a majority of that thing is from the boilerplate from the League of Oregon Cities.
Okay.
We tweaked it to add, if my memory serves me correctly, we tweaked it to add the information about employees and such.
So, when your point there, such as employment issues related to employees and officers who are not appointed or supervised by the council, you're referring to city employees?
Yeah, so like if someone was coming in here and say, you know, I dislike the park guy because he came in and raked up all the pretty leaves, you'd be like, whoa, 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 you know? Or I think he should be fired. It's like, whoa, 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 that is an employee thing, so.
I mean, if you want to give kudos for raking up the leaves, that's one thing. But if someone coming in and saying, you know, the bean counter stinks, he's got to go, or whatever, you know, that's not okay.
So, the, so based on this wording, we're interpreting it as the American Legion is going to be able to come in and say, hey, we're having a barbecue and we'd like the community to come out and that's everything. We're not, it's not anything to do, we're deliberating on or anything like that. But that's, that's, we're assuming that that's part of the.
That's part of the public comment.
Part of the, okay. The matters of concern, I guess.
But does that need to be flushed out then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Does that need to be flushed out then?
I, that's, that's the only reason, does that, is it?
Well, you do have it on your public comment, citizen input. You just have a citizen input. But you always say, oh, and community announcements. Down here, it says citizen input. Yeah, it says and community announcements. This is the citizen input portion is the way I took it, but.
Yeah.
Well, it's just.
But it says it on there, but it doesn't say it here.
It doesn't translate into this document. That's what I think you're getting at, right, Paul?
Yeah. Councilor Maldonado.
I'd like to say, let's move this to another meeting because just on the small section alone, we're going to get into further details. We're going to find more and more things to discuss and try to break through on this.
Okay, well, if that's the case, then what we need, so the work that the subcommittee did from the last meeting to this one was based on the information that we got from you all of things to change. And we had made it clear that you needed to read this document thoroughly so that way we could get those done for this meeting. And now, here we are with those changes made, and you want to make more changes. So, I will say this, if you want to.
I'm going to push back. I'm not making changes. I'm just asking for clarification. If everybody here says that what I said is clear to them, I'm good.
So, if that's the case, and you want to move it to a different meeting, then we need to know what exactly in here you want fleshed out and discussed and cleaned up so that we can work on that in the subcommittee and get this over the finish line.
But, and also I have to say, that's great, but the last time we saw this document was back in April, like April, May. All right, so to say, well, we gave this to you guys back in April, you should have got it figured out by now. Like, I thought we were, honestly, I didn't know that we were doing an actual vote on this right now. I thought there were still work sessions to be done personally.
I wish, and I, I think that the work that you guys done is great, but it's laid into it that we should come into this fresh. It should be at the beginning of the meeting instead of at the end of it.
It needs to be at the beginning of a meeting because this gets punted all the way to the end of every meeting, and it gets pushed off more and more. The stuff that is in here is important for us to do the business that we need to do. And it's got, and I'm, the other thing, because we are waiting on this part to then crack open city boards and commissions, because that's not part of this, because that's a whole nother thing. And then that leads us into the other subcommittee of updating the city code, or the city charter. Okay, so, yeah. I'm sorry, I'm very frustrated about this.
That's the only question that I had, just to clarify. So, if we're good with that, I'm good with it.
I, again, I have more questions about that, but I think Counselor Patton, that, or Mr., I should talk to Mr. Mayor, not the council, anyway, that the final fleshing out needs to be done here as a council, not as a committee because if we say something like, you go bring something back again, and in six months, we've forgotten what we said before. But I wouldn't mind it being next week or, or, you know, the week after. But to have time to discuss it, that's what I would like, to have time to discuss it and not be saying, hold us hostage to going home tonight. You have to pass us or we'll, you'll never go home tonight.
And that's all I'm saying. Come to it fresh-headed, actually discuss it as a group.
I'll take the blame.
We're just trying to do a clean resolution here. You know, we don't want to get together and vote on it. That's fine.
Yeah.
Councilor Maldonado, do you have anything else to add?
Her fingers up, my mind.
I know, but you were just talking.
No, I wasn't. I turned and looked this way.
Yes, Council President Hensley.
I have a request of my colleagues, if we're going to pump this again. Because I share the frustration. We've been working on this for a long time. Read the document in its entirety and write down your questions, please, ahead of time. So, we're not flushing it out spitballing for an hour and a half. Okay? Daniel? Okay? Thank you.
So. We will move, we will.
No tabling that one.
Table this and come back to it.
I'll proactively ask for questions.
You and I can talk about that.
You bet.
And can we put it on soon?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm not seeing any listed under old business, Randy, so we're moving, skipping that. Okay, there's nothing under new business, unless you got new business? Okay. Mayor's business, the Clackamas County Coordinating Committee is tomorrow evening. It will be here in City Hall. And so, yeah, we're going to set it up. We've got everyone from across the county coming. You are all more than welcome. Please come to the C4 meeting and rub elbows with the finest elected officials in the state. So, we're going to be doing, actually, we're going to be highlighting Canby. So, our transit, our Transit Director, our Economic Development Director, and what's his name? Gosh darn it. Oh, yeah, Don Hardy will be presenting as well. We're just going to be highlighting just some of the goods. And so, with the comp plan, the industrial park, like, it looks great and shiny and fabulous, but would have been some of the challenges, would have been some of the challenges that TriMed is, not TriMed, sorry, CAT has done with getting the Loop going and all those pieces. So, something that we are trying to do at C4 is move that group around the county a little bit more to expose the group to the other cities and whatnot. I was going to bring up, we already talked about it this evening, earlier this evening, we did approve some, working with the county on some, getting some easements for the Walnut Street connection. More to come on that. I have, so, as many of you know, the, at a couple layers of government above us, they're having a hard time working together and coming to an agreement. And so, that has created some food insecurity in our community. And so, I just wanted to just read something real quick regarding, from Mr. Ray Keen, who's the director, the executive director of the Canby Center, that the Canby Center is preparing to open up some more of their food programs and expand the facility next to the high school, so that's where their construction is going on. But they need help. They need help to fill the shelves. They serve and support and help roughly 400 families a month. So, starting this past Monday, they're asking people to drop off canned goods or other shelf-stable items, or feel free to donate online. Cash is king. They can actually buy more food than we can with cash and cash donations. So, they get a much, get food at a much better cost than we can. So, but every little bit helps. So, if you've, you know, I know we're moving into a season of giving and want, and there's something that you can do as a community member to get that rolling and get them restocked, that would be great. I want to thank the council and Chief Davis, sorry, Councilor Davis, regarding the Hometown Hero Award. I don't think that that's something that we do enough in our community, is recognizing some of our top community members. And hopefully, then when we, tonight, with as many people that we had here, maybe that will spur some more of that for conversation. Be nice to, you know, award that, you know, you know, once a year to somebody here in our community that's, that has deserved it and has earned it and deserves it. So, mark your calendars. December 5th, it's a Friday night, is Light the Night. Lights and parades and Santa Claus and all the good stuff in Wake Park. So, put it on your calendar. It's always a great event and a great turnout. And lastly, since we were just starting to talk a little bit about it, so we, as a group, talked about adding in the second Wednesday of the month as a time for a work session. And so, we were originally, Randy and I were discussing, and at the request of a number of you, was to use our work session that we're planning for next week to look at. at like the priorities and just some of the goal items that we had and start to kind of like, like, how do we want to prioritize those? We can bump that and move the council goals and policies to that, to next Wednesday, if those of us that still have flushing out to do can get that flushed out and back, is that too soon, um, staff and subcommittee?
Not too soon for me, I was ready to go tonight, so.
No, I know you weren't.
Ask the folks that need to read it and ask questions if it's too soon for you.
That's what, well.
That wouldn't be too soon, but it'd be nice, we, we could just have two subjects that night, you know, council goals and council procedures.
Well, I don't want to, it's a, again, it's an.
The goals thing is gonna take time.
No, right, that's what I mean, that's too heavy hitting topics that'll put us at 10 o'clock at night again. You know, I would prefer to tackle one item and be done.
That's the point, having that off Wednesday for Wednesday.
Right, I want it to be a one item piece, and we're already talking about piggybacking on the, having a mini city council meeting to approve the, uh, Pirlo Tremel Crow project. So, I guess, does the group, can we be ready to vet that and be done with it so that it can be approved this month? If so, then let's get it dealt with and off our plate.
Make the priority of the council policies.
What's that?
Make the priority of the council policies.
I would agree.
Okay.
Okay, so next Wednesday, work session, we'll, Councilor Maldonado, 7 o'clock, we'll do this and be done with it, okay? So, and then we'll plan December's second meeting next, okay?
Mayor, real quick, on the council policies, could I just ask my colleagues to please be prepared, because the subcommittee and Emily have put a lot of work into this, and it doesn't do any good to have a subcommittee if we're going to do the subcommittee work at the council meetings. In other words, be prepared to ask the subcommittee questions as to why we made the changes. Um, but it would be just like if I gave you the responsibility for committee to bring recommendations back, unless I have a big heartache on it, I'm not gonna ask a whole lot of questions, because that's what I authorized you to do.
I have a question on that, are we allowed to email to discuss that outside of the city council and not a work session?
Yep, we can't talk about it outside here.
No, you'd have to email your questions to Randy.
If you're emailing around the quorum, then you've created a serial meeting. What you can do is have, send your questions into a single staff person or thought, if you have like, send questions to a single staff person who may be able to get you answers in the meantime, or may say something that needs to be, it's something that needs to be discussed at the work session, as long as that single staff person doesn't then share with other members of council, that's fine. But talking amongst yourselves over email is gonna put you into a serial meeting.
Okay.
Send questions to Randy, you can bring the answers to them.
So, the, my question would be, if members of council have questions, clarifying questions of this document, send them to Maya or whoever. Uh, is, can a member or the subcommittee then see what those questions are and prepare answers to them that will then be presented at the meeting at the full body without discussing or making changes or anything to it? So that way, if they're doing their homework and saying, why is this thing the way that it is, can we then say, the reason it is this is because of that in the subcommittee, and then at the larger meeting, say, "Councillor Sterns, Councillor Maldonado, Councillor Waterman, your questions were these, this is the response of the, of the subcommittee." So that way, we're not then trying to hash that all out on the fly here.
So based on that hypothetical, likely yes, I'm going to check OGAQ to see if they've done anything that would change that analysis.
Okay.
The last week or so, and then I will respond tomorrow.
That's why I, I thought like, again, we were having more work sessions in between to hash those things out, and why I waited till today to ask a clarifying question.
Because that's the thing, is I feel like our hands are tied, if we're not in the subcommittee, to influence the subcommittee, because the subcommittee already is almost a quorum, and, and so that's, I mean, I understand your frustration when I'm getting done tonight, but I also, at the same time, I feel like, for me to try to put my input or influence in the reason I want to tail tonight because we're late, because we could almost hash it out then, but I really, I'm just, I'm frustrated at the fact that I'm supposed to agree with something that I have no, that I don't have a chance to put input on, and I can't legally give input on until we're sitting around this big table.
Well, and that's why I'm saying, then we are making it clear now, because for the subcommittee, our understanding was that that last meeting that we gave this to you all to review was where that discussion happened, that's why we had that section of the meeting dedicated to it. And so we got some information and we went back and we made those changes, such as cutting out the reper man portion of the thing and some other, uh, small edits. And then, so for us, we felt that when we bring it here tonight, it should be a fairly simple slam dunk. So that is where our frustrations come from. So I would say, it sounds like we're all on the same page now, to say that over the course of the next, if it's gonna be next week, I would say it needs to be sent in by Friday of what your questions are and your suggestions that you have or anything like that. And then that gives us time to get together the first part of next week to review those, if Emily says it's okay, to then prepare for that meeting so that we are not trying to reinvent the wheel that night. Does that sound like the plan?
Sounds good to me, come prepared with the answers for you.
Let's, let's pick the staff person now, I heard Maya's name.
Well, Maya's been involved with us with the, from the beginning, so she's kind of stuck with us now.
Are you okay with that?
Are you good with that, Maya? Okay, good.
You're allowed to say no to this group. I'm giving you your one get out of jail free card, Matt. I'll give you a new one next year.
That's just around the corner.
Yeah, see.
Okay, so that's our plan for Wednesday's work session.
Yes.
Questions, comments, clarifiers to Maya by Friday.
Yeah.
At 3:00 PM. Okay. All right, I'm done. Councilor Patton?
Um, I, because it is volleyball season, I have not been able to attend a lot of my meetings, because a lot of that stuff happens on Mondays. I will say that the Willamette Falls Landing Heritage Area Coalition, uh, the Westland City Hall is now up, and the historic Westland City Hall is now up and running as our base of operations. Uh, we are working to try and put together, uh, some exhibits and stuff in the lower area, which is, uh, normally open from 11 o'clock in the morning till 2:00 PM Thursday through Saturday. And because I am an idiot, I have now become the volunteer custodian for the building, so that is a new task that I have taken on over there. Uh, I will say vacuuming large rooms is very therapeutic for me, so it is quite pleasant. The bathrooms are a different story, so that is all I have at this point in time.
You need to learn how to say no, Jason.
Yeah, I've heard that one before.
Councilor Maldonado?
Nothing to report.
Okay, Council President Hensley?
Um, I don't have any liaison reports, but I do have a couple things I'll say, and I want to be brief. Um, I want to thank, even though he's not here, Scott Taylor and Gary for doing the QPR training, we had a pretty good turnout, so we'll probably be doing that one again. Um, so many thanks for that. I did have a meeting with Jennifer Patterson, Patterson this morning, this week, so, um, we got some good discussion, um, school district stuff, um, she's very open and excited about having conversations about some dirt, so that's good news. Um, we'll be having further discussions about that in the future, I'm sure. And then finally, I was invited to a celebration this week, I've never seen so many people upstairs in the Antonio Ballroom. It was standing room only, we were honoring Ken Buckles' first 30 years of working with the veterans and honoring veterans, and, uh, it was kind of fun, we had a lot of Milwaukee High School alma mater there.
That's great.
You know, we, oh, our volleyball coach spoke, and, um, yeah, Ken Buckles was the high school basketball, or football coach when I was in high school there. So it was kind of fun, you know, Mustang born, Mustang bred, gonna be Mustang till we're dead. That was kind, it was fun, it was really good, it was very, very good. Yeah, yeah, he and Melinda, Melinda surprised him, that was, they had this whole living history days thing, uh, bus tour, and, um, they had a whole bunch of veterans on a, on a bus tour, and then they brought him upstairs and she surprised him with this huge reception, it was, it was really cool. So, anyway, I just wanted to share that, they were giving a good honor to a good man who deserved it, that's all.
Great. Councilor Davis? Councilor Sterns?
Um, two things, one, I just want to say the words, street maintenance fee, um, it's been over six months since I was told it'd be done in two weeks. Um, and the other thing I want to do is formally ask, um, that we schedule in a time to, um, have a, either a public or a executive session to talk about our city's relationship with the city attorney. I want to say that I'm not doing this because of a specific complaint or me desiring to get rid of him, but I think that we as a council needed a chance to both get feedback and, and give feedback on our relationship with the attorneys.
And, um, Mr. Ely and I had that conversation on Tuesday, it opened yesterday, so more to come, I'll keep you posted.
More to come, okay, I just want to make sure that's, I'll start, I'll, I'll start repeating that and repeating it.
Okay. Councilor Waterman?
Bike and Ped Meeting is postponed this month, um, it'll be happening again next month. Library, it's like the, the LDAC Advisory Task Force Committee, et cetera, uh, it sounds like it kind of fizzled, and, uh, there weren't very much in agreement on, on any of the updating of formulas or, or, uh, helping equalize some of the funds for the city, so, um, so it sounds like really nothing really came out of it much.
A whole lot of pomp and circumstance for nothing.
So, a lot, a lot of time was put in by directors and, and mayors and city administrators and whatnot, and so, uh, that was kind of frustrating.
Paul Wood, sorry, Councilor Waterman, which cities, um, were the, I guess?
Sticks in the mud.
Yeah, we'll say sticks in the mud.
I don't, I don't think Marissa really said specifically, but it could probably be, I mean, it was kind of hinted that it was the ones that are doing, or that are already kind of comfortable, and so.
Well said.
Yeah, so, um.
Sorry, I asked you a very unpolitically, um, yeah, that was, that was not a fair question, I apologize for that.
I hope I answered it okay.
You know, I will gladly bring it up with, I know which mayors, which cities you're talking about, and, you know, um, hopefully they'll be there tomorrow night and I can poke them, poke them in their forehead.
And that's all I have for it to me.
And, and the county.
Yeah.
Well, the counties that follow as well? Oh, fabulous. Great, I'm sure Paul will be there.
Comfortable was the word.
Okay.
I think, aren't some of them running for election here coming up, I think, right? Like, huh, I think we can make libraries a key focal point for, for, all right, thank you all, appreciate that. Uh, Mr. City Administrator, your turn.
Uh, it's 10:20, so I, I can yield my time for adjournment, uh, and give a fuller report at the next meeting.
No, but you've got street maintenance fee on there, under there.
I was waiting with the breath for that.
I mean, I can talk street maintenance fee all night, if you'd like.
No, my ride's outside, he's probably asleep in the, in the mill.
We are, we're going door to door with the, to businesses, councillor, um, doing audits, so if you're downtown and you do get a knock, uh, from staff, they are, um, sort of doing an assessment of who's where and which businesses are operating inside of those, um, areas, and we are looking at a third party that does the audit, um, into our system, uh, with DKS.
Yeah, our business got a visit from them and said that Kami thought that we were in two different locations.
Yeah. See, we're out there on the street, so that's good, we're, we're moving forward. Our deadline, our, our goal, um, moonshot is January 1st for implementation, so we're, we're still marching in that direction. Um, so, uh, that's the street maintenance fee update, uh, calibrating, um, a lot of the ITE codes, updates and, uh, the new numbers and basically reverse engineering and equitable, um, um, distribution of the new rate that will come to you for adoption that is indexed to inflation, so staying on that path. Uh, I will be at the Bike and Pedestrian Committee in December, talking about the path, uh, among other things, sidewalk program possibly, uh, safe routes to school program possibly, but, um, striping of the path for safety, uh, looking at some of those, working with our police department and talking with the mayor a little bit about, um, enforcement and how that works. So, just basically going there for the first time to listen.
I, they'll be very pleased to see you, and that's, I think it's wonderful that you're gonna be there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so, yeah, um, any questions on any other items, happy to, um, announcement coming soon on our finance director, so stay tuned, um, could be as soon as Friday this week, so, um, you do have a flyer in front of you for the celebrations of our, uh, some of our capital improvement work, uh, 10th Street and Ivy, so that will be at the November 15th, um, here at City Hall, open to the public.
Is 10th Street gonna be done by then?
It's not a celebration being done, it's a thank you for your patience, uh, as we.
I was just curious.
As we move through that, so, that was worded carefully, uh, the neighborhood will be coming down for that, it'll be here at City Hall.
Okay, so I'm reading the flyer and they're, both events are on the same day?
Yeah.
So we're, okay.
Kind of combined them, because Ivy is done.
I'm so excited that it's done.
Yeah, congratulations, I bet. That's multi-year.
So we've been like, what, 14 years in the making?
Yeah, wow.
We've been working on that a while.
We only have, we only have 12 more, 12 more items to go, okay?
Yeah, so thank you, and, um, we'll get cracking on, uh, next Wednesday night and then the Wednesday after, so we'll be seeing each other plenty here in the month.
All right.
Uh, great, thanks Randy, appreciate it. Um, citizen input? Nope, okay, action review?
You've approved the consent agenda, approved ordinance 1658 to a second reading on November 19th, 2025, and adopted resolution numbers 1446, 1447, tabled 1448, and there was consensus to bring back the noise variance from Pirlo Construction Tremel Crow to the next council meeting, uh, I believe on 11/19/2025.
Okay.
Great. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Sorry, second.
A little favor?
Aye.
Kami, good night, thank you.